Good evening. I'm just testing my mic. Can you hear me?
Good.
Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Hanzek.
Present.
Councilmember Wesselak.
Here.
Wonderful. Well, good evening, everyone. We appreciate a full house tonight, and it's because we have a lot of big things on the agenda this evening. So I am very appreciative that everyone has come out this evening. Just as a quick heads up, I am going to walk through the agenda for this evening. There may be a couple of quick changes, just so that we, I understand that there's a lot of people that are here for two specific things, and I want to make sure that we are allocating time accordingly. So just as an FYI, before this meeting, the city council met and had an administrative function regarding the city manager's evaluation. We met at 6:30. This evening, we have a jam-packed agenda. We have two presentations this evening. The first is the Washington Advanis Hospital Site Fencing and Demolition. The second is the Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study. We then have two voting items, or three voting items this evening. The first is the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY26 Stormwater Management Budget Number One. The First Reading Ordinance approving the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. And then we have a consent agenda that will be appointing members to our Arts and Humanities Committee, Board of Elections, Commission on Landlord Tenet Affairs, Emergency Preparedness Committee, Ethics Commission, Grants Review Committee, Recre- I'm sorry, Recreation and Community Engagement Committee, and providing appointments for the Sustainable Maryland Committee. We will then have three work sessions this evening. The first is the Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study Preferred Option. That's a draft resolution. The second is Proposed Resolution on Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Work Plan. And then the last item is the Recommended Appointments to the Council Compensation Committee. On a Wednesday, July the 30th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. That evening, we will have two presentations. The first is the Montgomery County Cultural Plan. The second is the Quarterly Financial Report for Q4. We will then have a series of voting items. The first is the Second Reading Ordinance approving FY26 Stormwater Management Budget Amendment Number One. Second Reading Ordinance approving FY26 Budget Amendment Number, Budget Amendment Number One. Resolution Designating a Preferred Option for Piney Branch Elementary School. A Resolution Approving the Public Safety Task Force Recommendations Work Plan. We will then have a consent agenda where we will vote, and that will consist of the Single Reading Ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with Less Play America for Play Day. A Single Reading Ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an indefinite quantities contract for street and sidewalk work. A Single Reading Ordinance approving an extinction of the contract with Casey Trees for public and private tree planting. A Resolution Providing for Appointments to the Council Compensation Committee. And a Resolution Providing for the City Council's Summer Recess. And so with that, the council will be on recess until September the 10th. And so with that, we're going to move to our presentations. I'm going to tweak the agenda a little bit in terms of the pro forma, because I know that there's a lot of folks that are here for the presentations. So what we are going to do is start with the presentations before we move into public comments, council comments, and any city manager comments. And so with that, we are going to move into the Washington Advanis Hospital Site Fencing and Demolition Presentation. Hold on one second. Let me give you... There you go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Circe and the members of the city council. My name is Jeff Morgan. I serve as a Vice President for Adventist Healthcare, and I oversee our facilities, our planning, design, and construction activities for our health system. Tonight, I want to thank you for the invitation to be here tonight. We are at a point where we are preparing to raise the buildings on the campus. It's a somewhat lengthy process, which we'll talk you through. We'll provide a high-level schedule for that tonight. I have several colleagues with me tonight that I want to introduce. First, Carmen Brown. She is our Vice President and Leader for Government Relations for Adventist Healthcare. My colleague, Yavorka Saracovich. She serves as a Senior Director for Planning, Design, and Construction for Adventist Healthcare. I have Tim Hudgens, who is a Senior Project Manager and is responsible for managing the day-to-day on this project. And I have Terry Edmondson with me. He is a Principal with Clark Construction. Clark Construction will be the general contractor overseeing this process. And they will be supported by Berg, who is a regional and well-known demolition contractor in the region, has done extensive work. And Terry may speak to some of that. We, the triggering event, I think, for this conversation was the fencing plan. We have submitted a permit for a fencing plan. The fencing plan is really, given a lot of the vandalism activities that we've had on the campus and trying to contain that, it's, it has become somewhat of a hazardous and risky property. We are going to install a fence, a fence around the entire area that will involve the demolition. It'll generally be around the former hospital buildings, of which there are approximately six buildings. Obviously, there's the major large former hospital building, and then there's about five ancillary buildings that supported the hospital function. So the primary item tonight that we want to talk through is the fence plan. What does it mean? When, when, when do we expect to install that? And what impacts to traffic and so forth will that have? So I'm going to invite Yavorka to come up and walk us through the fencing plan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yavorka Saracovich, Senior Director, Planning, Design, and Construction for Adventist Healthcare. So on the diagram, we have, you're showing where the, where the fencing for the demolition is going to be installed. As Jeff mentioned, we are in the process of obtaining a permit for this, for this plan. It was submitted to Montgomery County, and we have worked with the, with the city to accommodate what we are proposing. So we will generally follow the property lines, except along the creek where, of course, the property line is way down and the fencing is going to go along the existing roadway there on top of the, on top of the hill. There will be three gates. Two of them will be what we call emergency gates, which is, which are posted there for fire department in the, in the case they need to come into the site. But the construction traffic is going to occur only on the Carroll Avenue side. That's the, the gate in green. We are keeping the, the, the access to the condo building, the medical office building, open at all times. So I'm going to flip to this page where it shows a little bit more, zoomed in area, how that access is going to work. So from Carroll Avenue, people are going to be able to come into the site, park, and enter the building. We are not blocking any, any access, any emergency access from the building and so forth. We will, maybe some of you have wondering, we have posted some ribbons on the site with some trees. That is part of the survey work that, that engineers are required to do. They are required to record all the trees of significant volume. The county has rules about that and the city as well. So, so that's, that's what those are for. We are not taking down trees. We will also, I'm going to quickly give you a little overview of what Jeff is talking about, which buildings are going to come down eventually. So the Conference, Conference Center, the listener building, the hospital itself, garage, power plant, a power plant, and the medical office building on, on the, on the far end of the site. So this is our schedule in general. It will take about 22 months. Of course, it depends highly on when exactly we get the permits and so forth. But this gives you a sense of how long things take. So first is the fence. Then we'll do some work on utilities to separate the power, power, water, and so forth. Then we have a lengthy process of environmental abatement. Our colleague Terry is going to tell you more about that piece. And then the actual demolition also has a permit involved by itself that's apart and separate from the fencing permit. And then, then there will be an activities that infill the site at, at, at the end of the process. So overall, it takes about 22 months. Depends exactly when we start and how long it takes to, to pull everything together. So I'm gonna...
Thank you, Yavorka. Just to be clear again, there's one permit that we have filed for, and that is the fencing permit. As you can see in this overall schedule, the demolition is a number of months away and several months before we even have a, a permit ready to file with the county. So at this point, I would like to invite Terry Edmondson to come up with Clark Construction. He'll be overseeing the work and the, the schedule of activities here. I'd like him to talk through sort of the typical approach that we're going to take for a project like this.
Thank you. So as I said, Terry Edmondson with Clark Construction. The beginning of this project, though, one of the things that we wanted to partner with, as with the Venice, is with Berg Demolition. We have a strong partnership with Berg. Berg is probably one of the more well-known demolition contractors in, not only in the state of Maryland, but as well as on the East Coast. They have been responsible for many projects with Clark Construction. Most folks know that Clark has made the state of Maryland our home for over 120 years. So in Bethesda, still have presence then in the town of Bethesda, as well as in other parts of the United States. So as we, as we look in this project, the, the first part, and I think of work had mentioned it as far as our fencing plan, I think that is the first part. So before we start the fencing plan, we, we understand that there's a behavior change that probably would need to take place, and that's more for the residents to make them aware. So prior to setting the fence, now, we will actually put signage, digital signage boards up. We propose that. So allows folks to, give them an early warning of traffic pattern changes, road closure, et cetera. So we are going to post them at each entrance, one on Maple Avenue and one at Carroll. The, the whole part of that, again, is to give them flexibility and time. We will start, as work had mentioned, as far as coming in on the Carroll Avenue side. That will be the first area that we start creating the gate, the pathway. I think that the stop the, the behavior of people utilizing that as a pass-through traffic way. The, the fencing will take one to two weeks to go around. Quite a bit fencing. We are going to go with reinforced posts where, where needed. We are not going to disturb much of the, the land at that time. Everything is post-driven, except into the hard areas. So we will actually reinforce that based on the time. Everything will be locked with, we will make sure that we get with the local fire department as well as police, but most of them in, in typical circumstances and incidents that we just put chains up and they just cut it. So they have to access that. They would rather not go through a Knox box. Knox boxes seem to be a little bit more cumbersome. But we will, we will also have code locks on there. We will give the codes, but if they're going to go through, they're going to go through it with a, and just cut it. So that's okay. So with that, once we get the fence up, the, the next step of the program will be the abatement side. And I think that's one of the concerns that everybody would have as far as, what does that mean? You know, with that, we have, we have done a hazardous survey. ECS has completed a hazardous survey back in February of 2024. With that, they have found four items that we consider hazardous on the, on the project or on the premise. The cleaning supplies, asbestos, PCBs, which are in the ballast of the lights that they, since they're old, as well as the mercury bulbs. All those will be removed prior to demolition. One thing that I think prior to the erasing happens, we will have, we will have an industrial hygienist come in and give us an all-clear. That would need to occur before the permit, demolition permit can actually be received. So that type of work is, is not driven by any type of permit, other than just a posting to let you know that this work is going to occur. We are, we are projecting that work to be about 100 days. Yes, 100 days. With that, the material that will be taken out, the hazardous material, one of the other reasons why we partnered with Berg, they actually have their own sorting facilities that is able to take this material in Baltimore. So that is another reason why. So they will actually take the material, they will have containers, we will have containers on the site, which are lined containers, sealed containers, which the material will come out bagged when it leaves the building, will go in the containers, sealed, and then they will eventually leave there and go to Berg's sorting facility. Everything will be removed according to OSHA as well as EPA guidelines. So that's something, they have yearly inspections that happen on their property. So again, that's something that, when we looked as a partner, that was one of the reasons why we partnered with Berg for this ability. Throughout, once we get inside, I would say during that first period of the abatement, you would not see much traffic going in. You won't see much traffic leaving there, other than a few trucks here and there, but the work will be contained inside. We will actually set up anywhere that we have hazardous material, there will be contaminant rooms that will be set up. We will have HEPA filters. Our, our personnel will be wearing proper PPE to remove the hazardous material. So again, you won't see much of anything that will occur and anything out of the normal. After that, after the, the abatement work is done, again, I said, about 100 days, once we get the, the demolition permit, we will come in with the industrial hygienist and give us an all-clear. Prior to any demolition work that will occur on the site, we will actually have an environmental erosion control plan. We will have all Clark's field personnel, our land disorder certifications, they have them. We also create a SLIP, which is a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which we will go through. We will work through the county as well with that. But we also have weekly inspections, but the, the good part of all our field personnel within Clark, they will actually do daily inspections of the sediment erosion control plan, making sure that there's, everything is up to the standards that are required per the EPA. The other part of that, we understand that there may be, as far as what Rogers Consultant is our partner on the design side, they will be constructing the sediment erosion control plan. That will include silk fence, that could be dykes that will need to be put in, diversion. So there will be certain plans that will have to be put in place, verified, inspected, not just initially inspected before we start work, but throughout the course of the project. And that will also be logged. So we, at any time, we are able to show evidence that we have done our inspections. That is a requirement of all our field personnel. So once we get into that, we will, we will get into demolition. As, as work and Jeff mentioned, there's multiple buildings in there. I think the, the area that we will most likely start, and again, I'm not going to go through each building, but will probably be the garage area once we get the, the ability to take that parking garage down. It's more for storage, staging. It's the easiest building to get down, and then we would move to the main, main hospital. One of the concerns that I'm sure is of everyone's concern is, you know, noise and dust. One of the areas that we will mitigate most of the, the dust from leaving anything outside of our construction site is going to be water. We will utilize, and it's, it's not, and I say the word fire canyon, or cannon, it is just a little bit larger hose. We will not use more water than is needed. It's, it's not something that we are saturating the earth to make sure things run off. It's just enough to keep the dust down and contained to our site. So one... So, one, things that we want to respect is the environment. We understand and recognize that. So, not only is the, you know, slinger creek a concern, but air. So, that is the reason why we, we use that, to make sure that we maintain the air quality. We will also do air quality tests throughout. So, we will make sure that the air quality outside the site is, it's the level that is required. We recognize too, within the confines of the city of the Koma Park, we have noise ordinance for construction. You know, workdays are Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. We do not plan to work weekends. We also, there is two ordinance as far as with the DBA's noise levels, which is 75 and 85, 75 non-permitted, 85 permitted. So, depending where we are and what we need to do, that would require us to possibly change or amend that side of it. But the good part of the construction side of this, we are not looking to do any type of pile driving, so it's not gonna be the continuous banging. Yes, we will have equipment on-site that will be working, and you will hear the beepers. We, by law, they are required, but it's not gonna be a point than any other construction site. So, we will stay within the performance of the construction ordinance that is there. Another part of the, I guess, construction everyone worries about is, how much vehicle traffic are you gonna impact my community? And I think one of the things that we recognize that, we don't wanna, we wanna be part of your community. We do not wanna disrupt your community. Now, we just completed the very large hospital at Georgetown, MedStar, which is right smack dab in the middle of Georgetown and the, the community. We, we had these, hosted many of these type of council meetings, and they were very pleased with how we, we respected that. We are very blessed with this project. We have a large site. Good part of the demolition is it's not gonna require an awful lot of vehicles that will have to come in as far as workers. That's usually the, the inconvenience that is created by the construction site is the workers on-site. Most of our projects, we have anywhere from 700 to over 1,000 crafts workers on a project. Here, we'll probably have about 30, which is, we have plenty of land to park our spots, parking on. So, we won't be disturbing the community with additional vehicles. Now, we will look to have about 30 to 35 trucks that will be offloading material during the day. We are, we are anticipating anywhere from 32 to 3,500 loads of debris that we will be removing, rubble, from the demolition of this. You know, one of the things that we are looking to, and I think is, again, other than this raising the building, is how can we actually be environmentally friendly? I mean, I think the, I think it's, you know, a lot of the laws and rules are putting in place. Construction, you know, they, they follow that with the energy guides. But, you know, what can we do with the material that's there? We have looked at, I guess, the, the building, how much, the tonnage that we're gonna get there, and we are projecting about 92% of what we pull off the site will be recycled, which is astonishing. So, all the, the concrete will be crushed and used as aggregate. We have to go down three stories into the ground, which we will bench out, make sure that we do it properly. But the, the basement levels will probably be utilized with this aggregate that goes, go back, so we don't have to take fill from the landfill to, for that. So, yeah, so during construction, again, the steel will be repurposed, reused. Again, a lot of why we went with Berg is that they had the ability to take that off-site and repurpose it and make sure that it gets to the right facilities and recycled back to, the community as far as that we live in. Either be roads, most of it will go back to roads somehow, some way outside of that, because they actually have contracts with the state for the roadside. Once the construction goes through, we're, we're anticipating about 120 to 130 days of demolition. The next 100 days after that will really be back to restoring the site, site restoration. That would be the infill, that would be the vegetation side of it, whatever that may be as far as that is coming back from the Roger Consultant that will meet for the permit requirements. But the, the whole duration of construction, we recognize that this is kind of, you know, maybe it's heel-to-toe sometimes, maybe there's a little crossover as far as lag of each, each item there, but we are looking to be a little over construction side of one year on the site of construction. Doesn't mean that, again, there may be things that are delayed, but we're looking for a little over 360 working days for, for the, the activities on the project. So, with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them afterwards, but I'm sure you do. But I will leave that to Jeff. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, thank you all so much for, for walking us through this. I appreciate you coming out tonight and to share this information, but also answer questions that members of council may have regarding the project. I'm gonna do a quick check to just make sure that Councilmember Hanzak... Perfect. Councilmember Hanzak, would you like to kick us off? Councilmember Hanzak represents Ward 5, which is the location of the hospital site. Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Someone, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry for any background noise. My headset's not working that well. I just wanna start by saying thank you so very much for coming out and giving us this time with you. It means so much to the residents that live all across our city, but I know particularly in Ward 5 that is adjacent. You know, we, we really, really appreciate you being here and giving us all these details. So, I'm sure my colleagues will have questions, but I'll just kick us off, and maybe I'll have a few more to wrap us up, depending on what people ask. If you don't mind, because I'm remote, I'll ask them, and then I'll, I'll turn off my mic. So, I have just a few. One is, if you could maybe just share a little bit about what it's looking like timing-wise on when you think the fence might actually go in, based on what you're looking at right now with the permitting. Second, if you might talk a little bit more about the height of the fencing itself, the look of the fence from the outside, and what we might be able to see from the outside, given the length of time that it's gonna be sitting there. And then, I think the last thing I'll ask just right now is, how would you recommend that council members and residents are advised to communicate any concerns as construction goes along? I'm sure you'll be giving that to the city if you haven't already, but I really would love to hear directly from you what you'd like to see. I am often the first point of contact for my residents, particularly those that just sort of are confused about what, who they're supposed to contact. And so, I just really wanna make sure I have the most clean line of communication with, with all the different parties that are working on this project. Thank you.
Yes, so, thank you. So, as far as with the, with the fence, we are anticipating the final approvals for the fencing permit, I would think, in the next two weeks. Within, once we get the fencing approval permit, we will then go ahead and install the signage as far as display boards, letting everyone know. So, that, we, we plan to keep that up, you know, by recommendation of the police department for about three weeks, to give people proper notification that changes are, are going to occur. The fence that we're looking for is, is, we're gonna have the three gates, as we mentioned. The main one would be at the Carroll Avenue entrance. The top of the fence is six foot. So, we're, we're looking to keep it six foot. We are not looking to put a screen in, because unfortunately, that just turns more people to try to go in. So, you will be able to see visually from the outside of the fence what, what has happened, what, what is ongoing. So, with, with that, I'll leave the last question to Jeff.
Yeah, and if I, if I recall the question correctly, it's, it's, how do you get real-time or updated information about activities and the progress of this, this project? We have been working with, with Rob and his team to create a web link that would be hosted by Adventist Healthcare that could be posted on the city's website. And on that site, we'll obviously develop it as we go, but there would be an opportunity for the community to submit questions, FAQ, and that sort of thing via that site. Does that address that question?
Yes, that does mostly address that question. I am wondering, though, for example, let's just say that on a given day, we had a sediment issue. So, I would consider something like that potentially to be rather urgent. Would you see that as the mechanism? Or is there, is there also going to be some sort of, I don't know, direct line that we can utilize?
So, well, on this website, we will actually have our central personnel that will be listed on there and their phone numbers, including mine. So, if there is something that occurred like that one, I, I would hope that we would notify or we actually be aware of that well before anyone else would. But we, all our superintendents will be on-site. So, we will have, anytime there is work, activities, Clark Personnel will be on-site. So, if, if there is something that came about, you will have a trailer there, and they would be able to just go to the trailer and see our superintendent. But as well as on the site, our phone numbers will be listed as contact. Does that address your question?
I'm just gonna, just make sure I get that one fully answered. And so, would that include weekends and evenings, do you think? Do you envision that, just in case something came loose or something happened on a weekend or evening?
Ma'am, my wife is not here to answer that question, but she would, I, my phone is never off. So, she doesn't like that. Like, you can call me anytime, and we are available. I will be available.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. I see City Manager DePerto.
Yes, just to follow up on that, I will be the point for the city. I can be reached at all times in numerous ways. And Jeff, I think you've graciously offered to be the primary point of contact for Adventist Healthcare and the project. We can be available in that manner as well, whether it's residents, staff, or mayor, council that need to, if there's something urgent, particularly if it is in evenings or weekends or other inconvenient, less convenient times, just know that you could reach out to me directly. And Jeff made the big mistake of sharing his cell phone number with me, so I have that. I know where he is, and he's very generously, you know, offered to be available to the city when concerns arise.
Thank you, City Manager DePerto. Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you very much. Very informative. I, some of it went a little quick, so I'm gonna ask if you could back up a little bit to the environmental part that you talked about. I mean, you named four things. No, I forgot what the three were. I got three of them.
Yes, ma'am. There were PCB.
PCB is the first one.
Yes, ma'am. The ballasts that are in the light fixtures.
Right.
The, the bulbs have mercury in them, the light bulbs. Cleaning supplies.
Cleaning supplies, that was the one I missed. Okay. And so, Berg, Berg has experience in all of this, including asbestos removal.
That is.
And when you did the environmental assessment, I'm assuming that was an A, an ASTM-level assessment? As, yeah, and...
ECS completed, so we have...
ECS, okay.
ECS, yes. They are a third party. They come in and they did a survey of all the buildings and identified the hazardous material.
And you found no radioac, radioactivity from the...
Nothing listed on the site.
Old machines, nothing. Okay, and lead?
It wasn't identified on there, but again, when we find, and we will have folks that, a hygienist that will go through there. If we find it, it'll be removed properly.
Okay, great, great.
I just wanna comment on, on the radiation.
Yes.
We, we've had all radiating equipment removed, removed from the site for about three years.
Okay, great.
It's gone.
Did not know that. Thank you very much, very reassuring. So, I wanted also to ask a little bit more about the, what you mean by infill, and to ask a little bit more about the recycling of the various materials. So, that's great that you've got a large percentage planned to be recycled. That is fabulous. And so, a lot of that is gonna go back on-site as infill? Did I understand that correctly?
So, initially, in the demo, it's controlled demolition once we get into the inside. So, the, the steel will be taken out.
Take out the steel.
So, the steel, so that can be recycled on its own, separated and recycled. The infill part, as far as when we get down to the basement levels, once we start excavating that area and removing the, the structure that is there, we will take aggregate, we will take the concrete that is on the site, and they will take it back to their landfill. I won't say the exact aggregate that comes off the site, but they will be using recycled aggregate to come back, as well as some of that came off the site. So, they will have it, they will be bringing in truckloads. When we start to make the infill of those areas, that's where the, the recycled content. But we will keep records in track of how much goes off the site, how much tonnage, and that way, we're able to underf, but everything that goes back to that site, it gets reused and recycled.
And so, that's a best practice in current demolition techniques.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And so, then my final question is, of course, you don't know all of this right now. You haven't even applied for the permit. Would there be a point at which you can share the copy of the permits that you received with the city manager, so that people can have access to them if they want them? And is there a point at which you can report back on some of the details of the environmental assessment stage? What you found, how it went, where, where it went, what's going back in the site? Yes.
I was waiting for you to add.
Now, that, that's the question. Everybody's saying yes. Okay, and as far as, we, we just, you say this, I'm sure you know this, tree permits, noise permits, county erosion and control. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're, as I mentioned earlier, the, as far as the sediment erosion control, we will make sure that is signed off prior to, as our folks, again, we do a SWIFT plan. Internally, we actually develop that with our contractor, which we will submit as well. What the, the inspector that will walk through, they will see that. We actually show that log of the inspections that occur during those. Again, I'm using acronyms, but it's a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So, in a construction, we use a lot of the acronyms. So, I'm sorry if I start saying that. Just ask me what they are, and I have no problem.
Great. And so, yeah, so the city has the tree permit, the tree protection permits, and we have our own stormwater program. So, yeah, you knew that, of course you did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. Very good presentation. I have three brief questions. One, when you recycle the rebar, do you do that on-site, the, the crushing and separation? Or is that done off-site?
Most of that will be with the machinery that they have. They will try to separate the aggregate and the steel away from the concrete here on-site. So, they, they will use the machine that will do that. And then, they will stick the steel in its own containers, as well as the concrete in its own containers.
Okay, so that we could expect some noise with that?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other two have to do with the, the infill. Is the site, two questions. Is the site gonna be regraded in any way from what we can roughly call what it is now? And second, are you, are you doing demo on the, all the paved areas as well, or just the buildings?
So, there, there is areas of the asphalt that get removed and goes back to green site. So, as far as the final grading, there is a final grading plan that will be developed through Rogers Consultant. We will go back. So, you will have a, per, per plan, you will have the, a site that looks manageable. It's green, which vegetation, properly graded. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
And to be clear, should there be some roadways or parking areas that are still there?
For the, for the medical office?
Yeah, only for the medical office.
Okay, everything else will be gone? All the other asphalt will be gone? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Dibala asked my question around the tree protection plans. One, one question I have, I know that we've, we've heard from the community quite a bit around the idea of repurposing the buildings that are slated for demolition. Has there been any, any thoughts or decision-making that you're willing to share around the decision to ultimately demolish instead of maintaining for potential repurpose?
Yeah, I can offer a comment for that. Initially, I spoke about, you know, the hazards and the risks and the unsafe conditions on the site. So, number one, that's a paramount issue for us. More significantly for Adventist Healthcare, we have long-term debt that we're carrying on the buildings on that campus. Those were tax-exempt bonds, and as a result of that, we, we have to remove the buildings to free up restrictions and limitations on future development on the site. So, that's, that's the driving factor for us.
Thank, thank you so much for, for your transparency in that, because I know that there's been quite a few questions that we, that were brought up in the community. Another question I have is one that is, I guess, a little bit more practical. So, you'd mentioned the boards, the digital boards to try to direct traffic. Because one of the things that I, I'm looking at the fencing plan, and I was like, whoa, people may make that turn and just hit a bit of a dead end. So, are you in communications at all with state highway? I mean, of course, you're in communications with the city about whether or not we may need to make sure that there's signage, not just as it relates to your property, but perhaps leading up to the hospital site, so that people will know they can't make that turn? So that people will know they can't make that turn? That may be something, I'm looking at our city manager, something that we may wanna talk about with our public works folks. Because I drive that stretch every day and I know that sometimes it can be a quick come up once you cross over flower and people will make that turn, assuming they can do it, and then find out they need to make a U-turn. So if there's some way that we can make sure that there's some digital signage as folks are leading up to the site, I think that might be helpful.
We'll be sure to coordinate with Rob and his team as we prepare to put those signs up.
Great. And the other physician condo building that will be intact? And you said that they won't be disturbed, but can you go into a little bit more detail on what that means? Because I find it difficult to believe that you have all of this fencing surrounding you, there's demolition happening. Is it, you won't be disturbed because we're not gonna impact your actual space or?
Disturbed or disruption. There may be some disturbance, but we are focused on mitigating disruption to their operation. We actually have three suites in that building, so it's important for us as well. And they're long-term partners of ours in that building. So we are focused on their accessibility to the building, both pedestrian and vehicular. We're focused on preserving parking. You know, I want a phone call if his folks are parking in their parking spaces and we will clear them out immediately. So whatever we can do to focus on preserving their operations, their daily operations, that's what we wanna do.
And so you all are in communications with the providers in that facility to make sure that we're able to address any challenges that they experience?
Yeah, again, we are owners of condo suites in the building, so we interact with the president of the condo association and we intend to keep a robust line of communication with them.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you. I have three questions, if that's okay. Okay, my first question is, as you were describing the infill process, is there any kind of visualization to show? You know, you said that some of the parking areas are going to be removed. Is there sort of a map or that would illustrate what the green space and what the remaining paved area would look like? That we could see, sort of a visualized map somewhere in the papers?
I think we could work with Rogers to develop a rendering of that so they can have that.
That would kind of be helpful to help us visualize where, how the infill will, what the sort of end state of it would be at the conclusion of the infill process. I appreciate, that'd be nice to be able to see that. My second question, this probably just will display my ignorance of how the traffic patterns would work. But with a lot of these trucks, which I assume are gonna be heavily laden with some of the construction materials coming and going, is that an issue for the bridge that was just replaced at Carroll Avenue, over Sligo Creek? There aren't, some of the roads around there don't really necessarily seem like they're prepared for a lot of construction traffic. I wonder, is that?
So prior to any of that, we will actually create a construction pattern, road plan that we will allow. And then a part of everyone that goes through our site, including the drivers, go through an orientation side, which will also, the drivers of the vehicles that will be coming in and out, will go through that. Where they also have a plan, a printed off plan of where the roads that they can, they can travel when they enter and exit. So they get to the meat. So that will be something that we will develop, make sure that is articulated as well as presented to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So my last question has to do with, we just saw that recently, the press release that came from the university about how that you're going to be entertaining some proposals from, I think, developers who have some initiatives that they are, with respect to the long-term future of the site. And I was wondering, I think it mentioned seven or eight proposals that are going to be potentially entertained for ideas for the site over the long term. If some of the, what is gonna be the timeline for that? Like, might something come before you that would potentially change this plan before the end of the 2027 timeframe that we see here? And if so, what would be the process for us sort of learning about that and hearing more about those development proposals? And the status of the property in general and, you know, maybe changing the ownership of it? Or, you know, I guess the development itself and its relationship to this demolition process?
Yeah, and I think you started your comment or your question referencing the university as an invitation to these developers. That's a completely separate conversation and not something, and that's actually news to me. So it's not, Adventist Healthcare does not have a development plan for this campus. We're here tonight to talk about clearing and restoring the site to a natural condition. I can't speak for the university at this time.
And I do just want to clarify, so.
That was my mistake, I apologize.
One, the, I guess, the document that Councilmember Landman was referring to was not a press release. I believe it was something that was maybe an internal document that was shared with the university. And they're not talking about developing a, that document implies that they are working to partner or identify possible master planners or developers to help them with plans for their university campus, which is, may include aspirations for the acquisition of this property, but it's not limited to that. It also includes other parcels within their entire campus. So I do wanna make sure that that point is clear. And I appreciate you bringing up the point that these are two distinct entities. And the university has the ability to set vision goals for where they would like to and how they would like to grow. But that is a different question from what we're talking about today, which is the Adventist Healthcare site and the demolition of the properties that are currently held by Adventist Healthcare. Okay, seeing no more lights.
Please, Mayor Cersei.
Councilmember Hanzak?
May I have a few follow-up questions?
Councilmember Hanzak, we are at time and we have a room full of people. If you wouldn't.
No problem.
If you wouldn't mind.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it. So with that, we're going to move to the next presentation this evening. We are joined this evening by Montgomery County Public Schools to talk about the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. We are excited to present to you the feasibility study, the findings from the feasibility study process. Tonight, we have Jasmine McDuffie here from Stantec Architects. She will be doing the presentation. We also have Julie Morris here as our Director of Planning, Design, and Construction to answer any, she's over there in the corner, answer any questions when we're done here. So, but thank you all very much. It's been a, it seems like a long process, but it went by in the last couple of months pretty quickly. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Jasmine start and then I'm just gonna back up here.
Thank you, Rob. And thank you, Mayor Cersei, and members of the city council for being here. As Rob mentioned, my name is Jasmine McDuffie. I'm the principal at Stantec Architecture. Working with me on this project was a talented group of engineers and architects, as well as a great team from Montgomery County Public Schools. Rob Bastimner is our point of contact for this project and has been for the duration of the community engagement process. One of those engineers that we worked with was Clark Azar. They're a civil engineer and have done a number of projects in Tacoma Park. So they blended their expertise to this team. In terms of our agenda, we'll explain why we are here in terms of the feasibility study. We had a very nice schedule in terms of community engagement meetings that we'll share with you and the schedule that we are anticipating moving forward. Some observations that we've received, not only from our team, but also from the teachers and staff from Piney Branch, as well as the community who shared their feedback on the existing school. We also are gonna share with you the four design, eight design options that we've developed and then open it up for your discussion. So the purpose of the feasibility study was to really determine the most effective, efficient, and affordable ways to improve the school in terms of safety and security, instruction for the teachers, improve the health and well-being of the students and staff, to improve accessibility on site and within the building, and really improve operational efficiency. And all this is to really help the superintendent and help him to inform his Fall 2025 CIP. In terms of our schedule, we've had eight community meetings. This is our eighth one. We started the whole process meeting with you back in April. And so it's nice to be back again, thank you for that. And in terms of looking forward, we have actually provided our feasibility study for Montgomery County Public Schools and they are going to be sending that feasibility study to the superintendent this month. And the superintendent is intending to make his recommendation to the Board of Education in October. So I wanna start by sharing some observations that we've heard from the community. Again, teachers and staff, also members of the community, many may actually be here tonight, as well as our design team. Some of those include some concerns about site circulation and safety. Right now, the buses and the student, her parent pickup and drop-off share a common space and that creates some security challenges, a more secure entrance for the school. There's also some security concerns with the attachment of the pool and those facilities. And that limits the community's use of the pool after school hours. There's limited parking on site that doesn't accommodate the staff and teachers. There's issues of accessibility within the building due to the split level that we'll share a little bit later. There's also no playgrounds on site. And so students that are using playgrounds at the adjacent park have to be walked around the site to get access to those playground facilities. There's not really a clear circulation within the school, which creates some challenges in terms of security and observations. There's lack of natural light. Many classrooms don't have that. The library is a great heart of the school, so not all negatives, there are some positives. They love the art in the school, but the systems in the school are dated and need to be replaced. There needs to be upgrades to meet current codes and requirements, including accessibility requirements. We do need to also update pool equipment as well and continue to look at community access to the pool. When we started this process, we also looked at the site. There are some site constraints that we've discovered along the way. One is that there are some pretty significant stormwater utility systems that are in place running along Maple Avenue. Those are very large storm structures that should not be built above. And there's an existing flood plain that creates the setbacks which the school is set back on. So those are some constraints that really limited our footprint and ability to lay out the school in terms of the proposed options. Just to point out to everyone, in terms of the park facility adjacent, that park facility is elevated above the site of the school. And so that's what recreates a lot of the accessibility concerns. You can sort of see in the middle of the page, there's a stair that comes out the back of the school that doesn't provide the accessible access for students and staff. In terms of parking on site, there are 44 parking spaces available. There's some additional spaces, parallel spaces on Maple Avenue. However, the educational specifications for the school require 80 spots to cover the staff and students, which is really 45% below their requirement. So now we're gonna talk a bit about the design options that were developed. We were tasked with studying four design options. All the options we studied, we studied with a pool, which is the option As, and without the pool, which are the B options. So just an overview, we were asked to look at simply renovating the existing school within the existing footprint. So no additions, no major demolition, really limiting the work within the confines of the existing footprint and envelope. That would be option one. Option two looks at creating smaller additions and smaller demolition areas to help make some improvements. Less than 50% of the footprint would be demolished or added to with this option. That's option two. Option three looks at a larger area of demolition and larger addition options greater than 50% of the existing footprint. And then the final option is no renovation, but a complete demolition of the existing school and a rebuild of a new facility. So I'm gonna walk through those options that we shared. Again, option A includes the pool and option B does not. Before I look at the options, I do wanna point out the existing floor plan just to give you a visual of some of the constraints. As you can see, there's kind of four quads, classrooms in each of the corners of the building. In order to circulate through many of those classrooms, you have to go through existing classrooms, which creates a lot of disruption for teachers. It creates accessibility concerns. Those inboard classrooms are the ones that lack natural light. This school is a split level, so what that means is the library that you see in the middle is at a half level between the classroom levels. And so coincidentally, the restrooms, the main restrooms for the school are also on that level. So teachers, when they're allowing students to leave to go to the restroom, can't supervise or properly supervise students going to the restroom facilities. Those half levels also create accessibility concerns and circulation concerns for students. There are a number of stairs that students have to traverse in order to just get to basic classrooms within the building. And so this is an example of the existing building, just the three-dimensional massing of that, what that looks like. And so now I'm gonna share you option one with the pool. And so the big concept behind option one was to try to do as much improvement as we can, again, within the existing confines of the building. And the first thing we wanted to really tackle was accessibility and circulation. And so that red dash represents a corridor that we've added to this option to improve circulation and accessibility to those classrooms. It eliminates the need to go through other classrooms to access other classrooms within the school. But it does not address the concerns about the interior classrooms lacking natural light. It doesn't address accessibility concerns of the split level and the security concerns related to that. It doesn't provide the access to the park or facilities adjacent for accessibility. And to add that quarter comes at an expense of having classrooms that are undersized or smaller than what would be required for the educational specifications. And so looking within that existing footprint, we keep the existing pool for level one. We keep the existing gym and multipurpose spaces and kitchen and really expand admin. We are, we did look at improving the site circulation. So you'll see that we've separated the bus drop-off and student-parent pickup and drop-off to improve that circulation on site. But we are, one thing I'll mention is the existing footprint is much larger than what would be required to accommodate the educational specifications for this school. So that inherently leaves a certain amount of inefficiency with this option. The second floor, again, shows kind of that circulational level, circulation path that we created by splitting those classrooms, keeping the pool and the gym. And then the upper level is a very similar footprint. One of the educational specification requirements is to kind of have art adjacent to multipurpose and music. And we weren't able to accommodate that with this option. So as a summary, we were able to address the pickup-drop-off in terms of separating those from bus, which creates a better, safer pedestrian site circulation experience. We increased parking a little, but not much. We can accommodate a more secure entrance. But we, and we can improve the building systems that are in the building. But we aren't improving natural light. We aren't improving the security with the pool location. And we aren't addressing many of the accessibility concerns with this building. The next version is to look at that without a pool. And what we studied was moving the multipurpose to within the pool footprint. However, that does not address many of the issues that we raised in option 1A. So we still have its concerns with accessibility, natural light, daylight, and et cetera. And again, we did, were able to improve the bus drop off and parent pickup with this option similar to option 1A. The layout in the building is a little bit different because the ability of taking over the pool allows us to move the multipurpose over and move down music and art, so that improves some of those adjacencies. A similar footprint in terms of the building layout above the upper floors in terms of the classroom and that additional corridor. And again, very similar improvements as option 1A. Option two, we were able to again do, oops. We're able to do a smaller addition and that adds, provides some benefit. Go ahead to the upper floor. Adding those additions to the corners allows us to move the classrooms to the exterior wall, which eliminates the need for interior classrooms. So with the option 2A and 2B, we're able to provide natural light to all the classrooms. This option, of course, shows the pool. It comes at an expense of having a slightly smaller multipurpose space. The building pretty much stacks, and so those classrooms again are, have natural light. And then without the pool, we were able to look at a couple of things that were a little bit different with this one. The previous option showed a, continued to show the split level, which was creating some accessibility concerns and access. With the larger, with this addition and eliminating the pool, we're starting to look at options for creating an addition that can make a connection to the park. And you can see that in this demonstration here. But we also were able to lower the library and re-stack the floors in this option. And so the library is now on the same level as an academic classroom level. And so we don't have the split levels. The restrooms can be on a level with other classrooms. This greatly improves circulation and, and, and security and observation for teachers in the building. So this diagram here shows on the bottom and a diagram that shows how the multipurpose is below the library media center currently, and you can see those split level stairs. And option 2B, by moving the multipurpose to where the pool is, we're able to actually drop the learning, the library media center down to the first floor and create a multi-level space and really stack the building evenly in terms of the floors, which improves circulation and accessibility. And I'm just going to run through the floor plans. This option also allows us to have music, the, to do a multipurpose space and the arts on the same levels multipurpose, which is ideal for the educational specifications, ideal adjacencies for the students and staff. We have an addition on the back of the building adjacent to the park, which allows us to make a direct connection to the park from within the school. And again, those additions that are shown in the squares flanking the left and right of the school are the location where we've added additional classrooms, which allows us to take those interior classrooms and move them to the exterior and add natural light, have natural light for all of our classrooms. And this is the floor plan stacked at the next level. Moving on to option three, this creates greater opportunity. Each option, each option grows in terms of opportunity. But option three, again, we're making a larger demolition of the existing building and a larger addition. And what you can see is by allowing the design to take advantage of the larger addition, we're able to actually make the footprint much smaller. And that allows us to improve or increase the amount of site area for the, for the, for the community, increase parking, but also increase or improve the pedestrian experience leading up to the school. Again, we're looking at separate bus drop off and parent-student drop off. And so what we've done as a strategy is keep the pool and the gym bar and everything kind of pointing towards the parking would be new. And so it allows us to make that footprint again tighter. The, the pool stays in its current location. We've been able to locate the lockers adjacent to the pool, which creates an opportunity for the pool and lockers to be completely separate from the school from a security perspective. That would open up the pool for greater use by the community. The, the classroom bars that start to stack above there are nice. The classrooms are all equally sized and all have natural light and a very succinct kind of tight, efficient bar. And that bar stacks on the next level. And you can start to see that we were able to take advantage of the, the area between the building and the park, which is fairly hilly right now, and build into that hillside to make that connection. And that provides a number of opportunities that could be explored during design. And then a fourth level. We also looked at option B3, I'm sorry, without the pool. Very similar, again, the, the footprint could get a little tighter, obviously without the pool and the, and the associated facilities, the footprint gets a bit smaller, but similar concept. We're actually making the building much smaller, tighter. It's more sustainable in terms of limiting the amount of exterior wall and being able to increase the amount of space available for the site, increase parking. We're able to meet the educational specifications in terms of parking counts while maintaining the separate bus drop off area. So very similar floor plate. We're keeping the gym in that similar location where the pool was, multipurpose room comes in, able to have the great adjacencies between art, music and art and multipurpose and having admin face the community off of the parking. And again, stacking the building vertically in terms of the classrooms is a very efficient layout. And again, making that connection for outdoor learning against the park. You're able to access the park from within the building. Students can come up elevators, go right to a floor that they can exit onto the park facilities. And so 3B, really a safer drop off and pickup, safer pedestrian experience on site, more parking, again, a security entrance, and many of the other improvements in terms of site circulation, natural light that you've seen in the others. And then moving on to option four, the new build. This one takes a little, on a little bit of a different look. We were really trying to study an option for a building that faced Grant Avenue. That was something that was brought up in the community meeting once, is how do we address that connection between the school property and the community center that we're in, as well as accommodate some of the other site needs. This one has the pool, and so I'm going to kind of skip to this next plan. And again, similar to option B, we're able to, with a new build, create a pool facility where we can separate that pool facility from the school and create a really safe environment for the occupants for both, both facilities. The opportunity to have more site available creates outdoor art plaza opportunities for students and gardens for students as well, increase a separate parent drop off and bus loop in this scheme. The classroom stack, we were able to locate the library on the lower level, which creates a nice community access. And then the, the classroom stack among the floors above, there's an opportunity to place a courtyard or outdoor space above the library, which could create some outdoor space within the secure confines of the school, but also creating the opportunity to make that direct connection to this, to the park. And the floor plate stacks. So with both options 4A and 4B, we're really able to address many of the concerns that were raised by the community with and without the pool and meet the requirements of the educational specifications. In terms of looking at the option without the pool, similar footprint to option three, we're looking at keeping that bar pretty efficient in terms of size. It allows for us to really maximize the use of the site for other uses. This is another look at creating the bus loop within the front parking area and having the parent pickup drop off along Grant Avenue. Looking at the gym being in a similar location where it's at, tucking that multipurpose against the hillside, but also able to maintain the relationship between art and multipurpose and keeping the admin in the front, learning, a library media center off to the first floor, which creates really great access for the community. And the classroom bar stack similar to option 3 and 4A. So similar to option 4, 4A, this really addresses all of the educational specifications requirements for the school and addresses a lot of the concerns that were raised by the community and the school during our meetings. And this is a, a summary slide that just kind of, I'll put up on the, keep on the screen here, just summarizes all of the four or eight options rather that we developed. And that really concludes our presentation, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Quick question. I know that during the community engagement activities, there was a survey and people were able to provide feedback. Did you hear of any preferred options through that engagement?
Oh, well, we, we heard preferred options for a build new in terms of the meetings. The surveys were, that we provided were at the beginning related to the pool and some feedback on observations about the existing facility. But I think while there was definitely a desire to go with new, there were some concerns related to other aspects of the project.
Great, thank you. Okay. With that, I am, I just want to check to see if I see council member, just want to check with council member Wes select really quickly to make sure that there's no questions.
Not yet.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Council member Hansak.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this excellent presentation. I didn't have a chance to go to some of the community meetings, so this was great for me. I have two main questions and then I'll, again, I'll turn off my mic. The first is related to the bus pathways that have been created on options 1A and B, 2A and B, and 4A that are going, it looks like they're going up Grant. I'm not totally clear where those buses would be going, or even where there are cars on the other options, where they're going once they enter the bus pathway in order to exit. If you could explain that a little bit more, and, and my question comes from a place of, I guess you know, you know, that we have the dead end right now at the end of Grant, and there's a parking lot back there. It's hard for me to imagine conceptually, maybe that's not what you have in mind, that buses would have enough space to turn around and do a full U-turn and come back out Grant as they currently do. And my concern would be about the traffic congestion that seems to occur already up and around the back of Toma Park Elementary School if the buses are coming up that way. And then my second question is, if you could just speak briefly to the per capita footprint differences in any of these, in any of these, and if you can't speak to that right now, I'd just be interested in seeing that in writing. One of my big concerns as we go into this process is that at the end of the day, we end up with a larger per capita footprint, I hope, per, you know, for all of our students because it is the, the school with the, the smallest per capita footprint in the entire school district. So thank you so much.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, we, we recognize that the bus turnoff off of Grant is tight, but we are looking at those buses entering and exiting onto Grant. We will be working closely with the civil engineer. He believes that that, we can make that work, but it would be very tight in terms of the questions about the bus. We also explored the bus loop being routed within the parking area, like for example, on option 3B. So that was another thing that we had studied. And that could be applied, you know, the buses and the parent drop off could be really studied in both off of Grant or off of Maple. We intentionally studied both options. In terms of the per capita, I don't, I don't have that number offhand. I can tell you that in terms of the educational specifications, options four really get you closer to the gross square footage that would be required to meet the educational specifications for this school. And option 1A and 1B far exceed that because we're limited to really confining the renovation for those options to within, within the existing footprint.
Can I just clarify on option one then? Are you saying, when you say entering and exit onto Grant, are you saying that they would turn around at the, the way Grant is right now and come back out to Maple? Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I do just want to go back to the, the point of, you know, because one of the things that we heard a lot was class size and making sure that the space met enrollment, current enrollment levels, but future enrollment levels as well. And I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding what you brought up before because as I was going through some of the prior work, I was like, wait a minute, it seems like some of these earlier options may actually give you a little bit more space, but it doesn't give you the other amenities or efficiency gains. So would option four?
Still come very close to making sure that we have the class size necessary for, to meet the, the ed specs for, for the school with its enrollment levels.
Absolutely. And I'll point out that the educational specification capacity is larger than the current school enrollment for that school.
Perfect, thank you. Council member Dabala?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions for now and one maybe for later in, in the discussion. Do you have any sense of the relative cost and the relative timing of these options?
We currently, you know, we're currently finalizing the estimates to present to our superintendent. And so we're tweaking those numbers right now and I, we'd like to hold off on sharing any information until it's shared with the superintendent and the board. Then we'll come back and, and let you know that. But right now, we're moving some numbers around and trying to figure out the best options and making sure we have everything included in those estimates.
For me, for me in terms of selecting an option, if one was significantly more money, or was significantly less money, I would be interested to know that, but I can understand that you don't have it ready and.
Well, yeah, I can answer that. And just in general, the, the replacement is similar in cost at this moment to the option three. Actually, they, they, option three is showing that it's a little more money than the replacement because of the renovation cost. And so one and two are falling pretty close behind that. It's a lot closer than we, we, we thought they would be. You know, and a lot of it's due because of the renovation cost.
As being more expensive than new construction costs.
It's more expensive to renovate.
And as far as timing, there's no significant difference in how long each of these would take?
We are currently, all options are a two-year duration for construction. We also, it'd be a two-year duration for the design and then a two-year duration for construction at this moment. We can, you know, tweak that a little bit once we get more defined, you know, more defined design, but currently that's what we are, will be planning for the future.
Yeah, but again, no major difference between one and four. Yeah, all right.
There's a little bit, but you know, it's, it's the.
Not worse.
It falls on the, the school year anyway. We don't want to open mid-year. Even if I finished, you know, say April with one plan and maybe June with another, it's still an August reopening.
Okay, and so during design, that, the current school would be open and functioning?
I'm sorry, say that.
Two years design?
Two-year design, yes, it would remain open, yes.
Okay. So that was, that was one question. The second question had to do with footprint and, and in the cases where the building footprint is smaller, which I really appreciate, but also, but then also the paved area is much bigger. What, if anything, are the thoughts about ways to break up the paved area so that it's not so much? Or is that a detail compared to all the bigger decisions?
Certainly, we'll, we'll have stormwater management facilities that are going to be required on site so that I add some, some greenery. required on site so that I add some, some greenery. I think some of them, we start to look at a larger buffer along Maple Avenue to try to conceal some of that parking. And I think certainly when we get into design, there'd be opportunities to look at, are the tree islands, are there ways to maybe break that up a little bit more? It's just going to be a balance between trying to make the parking, and again, to your point, trying to break up that pavement. There's also a more sustainable pavement option we can, we can study, explore with the county.
Council member Dibala, I'm sorry for their, their lights, and we only have another seven minutes.
Okay, so I, for later.
Yep, we will, we will have an entire work session on the resolution for this item, but I want to be mindful of the fact that there are other colleagues that have their hands raised, and we only have seven, about eight minutes left for this discussion. Council member Gilbert.
Thank you, and I'll try to be quick. Thank you, it was a good presentation. My question is about the gym specifications. We currently have a larger sized gym than most, if not all, elementary schools within the county, and it makes for a great environment for our kids and parents for, for events. And there was so much information here. Can you tell me which of these plans do not have the larger gym in its, in its, you know, plan?
That would be option four. The other options, we maintain the gym footprint.
So option four, we have the standard sized gym.
Size, I mean the aspect.
Yeah, but it, we are asking for alternate pricing in our estimates for that larger sized gym. It's basically about 2,600 square feet large. So we're looking at that to be included as an alternate in that pricing.
For that option four?
For the, in option four, yeah, it would be included as an alternate. The other option's included already because it's keeping the same gym in its, in the same location. But option four, currently it's shown as the ed spec size, but the, the alternate will include a number for a, the larger sized gym.
Okay, and, and one more question just for clarification. The kids cannot go out the back door now to go up to the park, they have to go around the school, is that what she said?
If you exit out the building to go to the park, it's all steps, and for students who can't traverse the steps or staff, they have to walk along Grant Avenue to find an accessible route up to the playground.
Okay, so there, there's some accessibility for some of the kids right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member Gilbert. Council member Landman?
I only have one question. I know you can't give us deep specifics today, but can you just give us in general, an idea, like percentage-wise, what is the difference between the price with a pool and the price without a pool in the greater scheme of things for the school?
It's, it's probably closer to about 15% of the cost, total cost increase. And that, that would include everything currently, you know, but like I said, we're massaging numbers. I don't want to share exact numbers yet, but right now it looks like it's around a 15% add for a swimming pool from the total.
Right, so I just want to make sure that, that we're clear. So the addition of a pool between the two options can be perhaps up to a 15% price difference?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a special space, I mean, it's, you know, it's over a thousand dollars a square foot, so it adds up quickly.
Council member Wesleak?
Thank you, thank you so much for this presentation. As the parent of a young kid currently at Tacoma Park Elementary, I really appreciate it. I've been talking with a lot of other parents and we're really excited at the prospect of some major renovations at Piney Branch. I have two kind of main questions. The first is, is there any benefit, I'm thinking between basically the number three and four designs, is there any benefit to keeping part of the existing building? I imagine some of it might be cost, but I don't know if there's other factors. So that's my one question. And my second is, if you could speak more about the options that would connect better to the park? And actually, I'm, I'm sorry, and then a quick follow-on to that, which is just in general, the type of green space that, I don't know if there is an ed spec about and around that, and you know, this, it looks like all of these would continue to not have a specific playground at Piney Branch, but some of them added a courtyard and such. So if you could speak to, of, of any of that and the benefits for the kids, I'd appreciate it, thanks.
All right, I'll go. The option three, even though it is a larger option, it's very inefficient. So the efficiency rate increases when you go from three to four. There's not, currently looking at some of the, the numbers and things is, there's not really a, it would, wouldn't make sense to keep and do the larger renovations, it appears at this time, versus, you know, a full renovation, you know, demo renovation, or a demo and replacement, I mean. So, but it is a, it's larger, it's just not as efficient.
Okay.
I'm going to answer the other part with the playground.
Sure, yeah. In terms of the connection to the park level, we've looked at creating basically a, we would sack the floors of the building to a lot where one of the floors of the building would align with the park elevation so that you could come up the elevator and then go straight out onto the park elevation. And so that gets accommodated along a amassing of the building that's adjacent to the park. And that, that connection in some of these, you can see in options three and four where we're looking at even the potential of creating a greener space on top of the roof of the building, which could create an opportunity of having some playground space on the site itself, on the school site itself. So that's what you're seeing there. In terms of the courtyard, again, that's an option. A lot of times we, we include courtyards to help bring in additional natural light. In both those options, those courtyards were above a learning center, I mean, the library media center, that was more of an interior space. So having a courtyard above there allows us to incorporate solar tubes and other devices to bring natural light through into that interior public space. But while you have it, then there's an opportunity to use that courtyard space for outdoor learning, so that would be an option to, to explore.
Great, thank you so much, thank you.
Council member Schlegel?
Thank you. I want, I wanted to ask about the separation of the pool from the rest of the facility from a management standpoint. Is that only possible to do in four, in option four A, or is it also possible in option three A?
We are looking at some temporary options to separate for security, but it makes it, it's a lot more difficult because it's, it's just intertwined with some egress paths coming out of the building. So it makes it a little more difficult with it being in the place where it is versus if it was put into a new building, we can, you know, make those adjustments and have a better secure, secure area.
I see, thank you. I also had a question similar to what council member Wesleak was asking about the interface with the park and play areas. And I'd had a conversation with a Mr. Coppola with MCP, with Park and Planning.
Yes.
Who had said at one point that the, the, the play space that's directly behind the school in the park right now has an artificial surface. And he had said it was conceivable that Park and Planning could allow building expansion of the school into that space and then replace that artificially surfaced playground on, on the roof of a space. Is that something that could still be considered in design?
It, it could be. I mean, we're really early on all these options. We, you know, we, as you know, we, we spoke to them and we actually, they're allowing us, of course, the agreement hasn't been written up, but to go back into the hillside, which would be very close to that playground. And if they gave us the opportunity to use some additional space, we would, we would take advantage of that.
Great, and I just had one other one which was.
Just as a reminder, council member Schlegel, we are at time for this discussion. You can ask your last question, but we, we have a lot of people that are waiting on comments.
Thank you, yeah, I'll stop there.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, sorry, I have to run a tight ship tonight, I got a lot of people that are waiting to speak. Thank you very much. Thank, thank you so much. I mean, I, I will say, I appreciate you all and your, your dedication to making sure that we have, that our community is heard. And I will say at this point, if there's no difference really between three and four, give me four with a pool. But I know that that's a battle, that's a battle that is, is something that would have to be done through advocacy as it relates to the superintendent, budget matters with the board, the school board, as well as the county council. But I appreciate you all hearing us out and sharing all of, really taking a comprehensive look at all of the needs of the building and the community and how you could design something that might fit those needs.
Thank you, we thank you for your support, each council member and also the community. It's been a great, great run here, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now. Okay, so I am, we're going to move to public comments this evening. Now I'm going to lay down the ground rules. You have three minutes, I need folks to stick to the three minutes. There's a couple of special guests, I'm going to let them go first, that includes children. Okay? Yes, and I see John, so I will, I will make sure that the folks, that we have a couple of special guests and I want to make sure they have an opportunity to go first. So with that, I'm going to call up the assistant principal for, for Piney Branch Elementary School, Mr. Wertz, come on up.
Thank you, thank you, not, not necessary, thank you, thank you all. Thank you, council, thank you mayor for, for having me on. I, I come to you, Richard Wertz, assistant principal of Piney Branch Elementary School. I come to you today as a former teacher at East Silver Spring Elementary School, as a proud, proud father of three amazing, amazing children. My oldest and my middle are going back to school this fall to modular classrooms at a holding school. So I, I very much, the energy around this is, is dear to my heart and I hear, I hear everything. I, I, I come not to design, to, to advocate for a specific option, you know, A, B, C, you know, one, two, three, four, but I come to continue to advocate for our teachers and our students and our, and our city and our community. In my position, I am lucky to hear on a regular basis the impact, the impact of Piney Branch Elementary School on community members that were there well before I was born or well before I was, no, that's not true, thank you though, thank you for humoring me. But, community members who have been at that school and have, and Piney Branch holds that special place in their heart. And I come to, to thank the council, thank the community for the engagement, and I can, and our continued advocacy and, and support is going to be needed. Every year I talk to our staff, in, in August, I'm kind of practicing my speech, I said, we had five days, you know, the, the first few days, the teachers are back, the, the staff is working tired, we're all sweating, and, and I say, we, in five days, we took a building and turned it into a school. And I have that conversation with the staff, and the underlying theme there is that it's not the space, it's the people, it's the community, it's the kids, it's the families, and it's the smiles that, you know, we see every day, the hugs that we get. And throughout this process, I don't want to down sell the importance of an updated building. The challenges of Piney Branch are well-known and well-spoke, and, and, and I don't want to bela, you know, go, go on and on about that. But I know that our advocacy and our support and your support of Piney Branch will create a space that our kids and our families can be proud of, and our teachers and our staff who work tirelessly to make this community a stronger, smarter, more talented space. They, I, I know our advocacy, our collective advocacy will get us where we need to be. So I wanted to come and, and advocate for continued engagement, continued conversation, continues, you know, thanking the council, thanking our MCPS partners, construction planning, STANTEC, et cetera, and, and just appreciate everyone's efforts to keep this project moving and, and supporting Piney Branch because the work we do is so important. So, thank you, thank you mayor.
Thank you so much. We have John, Mr. Gavin from Adventist Community Services, come on down.
Hi, my name is John Gavin, I'm pleased to speak on behalf of Adventist Community Services of Greater Washington. In my role as the executive director for the past two years, and from 1986 to 1994, we are the managers of the beloved Piney Branch Pool. I've read the draft resolution and support it. Other pool advocates will likely speak to the history of the, of the 1970s and can best describe how a community pool came to be included in the Piney Branch Elementary School. The ACS history with the school and pool is more recent. In 2007, Ron Wiley of ACS and city council member Terry Siemens worked together to keep the Piney Branch Community Pool open, and ACS has continued that arrangement with the Montgomery County Recreation Department to manage the pool program with Joyce Siemens as manager since that time. We have a 17 years history with the pool and seeing what an asset it is, it has become to residents during those years, especially those who live within walking distance in the densely populated area along Maple Avenue. Each year there are more than 12,500 individual swims using the pool. My vision for the pool, the Piney Branch Community Pool, is that it will be a community space that is safe, financially accessible, inclusive, enjoyable, and one that promotes wellbeing for persons of all ages. Currently, we're working on some improvements, e-payments, a correct phone number on all the websites, a new sign, deep cleaning the locker rooms and other things that we want to do to make it better. Most importantly, we've set aside funds to offer free water safety and basic swimming classes for Tacoma kids who otherwise do not have this access. Growing up, I was one of those kids, which may explain why I can't swim. It's truly an honor to reach forward to make that happen here. ACS is committed to keeping the community pool open and accessible for students during the school year and for use by residents year-round. We welcome input from the community, the mayor and council on further improvements you would like to see us make as part of our commitment to both the school and the community. We want to thank MCPS and STANTEC for incorporating the pool options in their very fine designs. We will note that most of the needs for a new school can be addressed without sacrificing the community pool. We support the resolution for a new school, which includes addressing the parents' concerns about holding schools and bus ride times for their children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about this community asset. We do have Friends of Piney Branch Pool T-shirts for the mayor and council. For time's sake, we will give those out at the end. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, next up, Joyce Siemens. Come on down.
I'm trying to get my support system here. Hello, mayor, council members, my name is Joyce Siemens, I live at 149 Ritchie Avenue. I live on the same property I was born on. I am proud to be a Tacoma Park resident. I am the director of pool operation at the Piney Branch Community Pool. I want to thank the council for supporting the pool and your resolution tonight. I also want to take a minute to thank some of the people who keep the pool operating. At the county, the county executive Mark Elrich. Council president Kate Stewart and the council members. Nancy at ICB. Robin, who retired from the rec department. Scott, who leads the pool maintenance that works and keeps the pool going. I also thank the many Tacoma Park council members who have supported the pool through the years. The principal of the school, her staff, Shayna and her workers. and her workers. The PTA who looked out for the children. I hope the community supports the PTA because they make sure the children get to use the pool twice a year during their gym class. I also thank all the people who run programs at the pool. Susan Katz Miller, I thank you for your ongoing support of the pool. And thanks to all Tacoma residents who swim at the pool and support it. You may be interested to recall how Adventist Community Services started operating the pool. After the county decided to close the pool, Tacoma Park residents asked the county to reconsider. Terry and I was volunteer at ACS, and Terry suggested to Ron Wiley, the ACS Executive Director at the operating the pool, would be a good idea. After meeting with some of the county council members, ACS submitted a plan and was awarded a contract to operate the pool. Ron then asked me to manage the pool, and I have been the Director of Operation ever since. The Piney Branch Pool is more than just a place to swim. It's a vital resource for health, safety, and equality in our community. Learning to swim saves lives, especially for children, and access to year-round aquatic activities supports wellness for residents of all ages. As the school involves, so must our commitment to the shared spaces that strengthens us. We urge you to encourage the new school include a community pool. Tacoma Park is speaking with one voice, keep the pool. The pool is dear to my heart. I like seeing happy people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And so I know that we are joined by a number of students. So I just want to check to see whether or not there are any youth that were planning to provide any comments this evening? Any youth that was going to testify?
Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Mahunio Agasa, and I live, and I live in Ward 6 Tacoma Park. The Piney Branch Elementary School Pool is important to keep because of the history and the joy it has brought to many people. Senior citizens, adults, teens, kids, and babies use this pool to learn the sport of swimming, to practice swimming, and to learn about water safety. Many people come to this pool because it is close and easy to access. If you plan to take this pool away from us, you plan to take away the value from our community. You are also taking away students' opportunity to learn and their joy of having a swimming curriculum in their PE class.
Thank you very much. Any other youth that wants to speak tonight?
Hello, my name is Mana Agasa. I live in Ward 6 Tacoma Park. I am a student of Piney Branch Elementary School. I heard the pool might get closed, and I am against that opinion. The Piney Branch Pool is an important part of our community because it brings happiness, it brings people together, and teaches those who don't know how to swim. It is, it is important for my part of Montgomery County community to keep this pool. Not only did this pool help others learn to swim, but it also helped me and all my siblings. If the pool closes down, then the people who don't have much access to pools near them will be sad. Finally, the pool should not be closed because people care about the pool, especially kids, and I do too. It would be a big loss. I think it is cool that the Piney Branch, that Piney Branch is the only elementary school with a pool in Montgomery County. All schools should have a pool too.
Thank you very much. Any other youth? Come on down.
Hi, my name is Mawa Agasa. I live in Ward 6. I like Piney Branch Pool because it would be useful for kids like me who want to learn how to swim in the pool. I would like to keep the pool because when other kids and I go to the pool, we could all learn how to swim in the pool, and the PE teachers will help us. This pool is important because swimming is an important part of our community, so please don't take away the pool.
Thank you very much. Any other youth comments? Okay. All right, we haven't moved to adults yet. Okay? Come on down, little ones. I know Ampro, so I can do that.
Good evening. My name is Mahuli Agasa, and I live in Ward 6 Tacoma Park. I'm here to speak about something that has shaped the lives of many people in Tacoma Park, the Piney Branch Elementary School Pool. This pool isn't just a recreational spot, it's a resource. It's where children in our diverse working-class city learn a skill that saves lives. It's where adults come to stay healthy and where seniors can do exercise that doesn't strain their joints. I understand the need for more classroom space at Piney Branch, but keeping the pool will not impact the number of classrooms that will be built. Eliminating the pool is not a solution. It's a sacrifice that hurts the very people we're trying to serve. The pool supports equity, and not everyone can afford private swim lessons, and not every family has a car to drive to a gym. This pool is walkable, affordable, and welcoming. There are several design options being considered, and only a few keep the pool. I strongly urge you to choose one of the designs that preserve it, not just for the current students, but for the future of our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very wonderful. Okay, any other youth? Okay, now we can move to the adults. All right. As a reminder, three minutes. Let's go ahead and line up so we can, we can move this along.
Why you emphasize three minutes when I stand up?
You know, I hear...
No, no. Okay, okay. All right. All right, all right, we gotta go.
All right, let's go.
All right, I'm Reginald J. Ruffin. I'm here in Tacoma Park with the thought of community first in mind. All right, so why wouldn't we not have a pool? Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we have something to serve the community? Why wouldn't we have something? Because everybody can't get to a beach or private swim club, and everybody can't travel outside the community. So why wouldn't we have a pool? I'm sure, and I like the options. Thank you, by the way, for presenting those options. Thank you for those options. When I was a child growing up here, wasn't that long ago, when I was a child growing up here, we used to play basketball in the fire station. They used to have a full board. I don't know if they still do, but they used to have a full basketball court. So we'd go there, and then like, then we'd come down here, we'd take our bikes, ride down here, or we'd walk down here, and we'd get into the pool. The pool was used, the pool, by us getting in the pool, it kept us out of trouble. So we were very fortunate to have it here. And at the same time, the pool was used by kids, seniors, and everyone in between. Putting the community first, we want kids, we want kids, seniors, and everybody else to still have that same opportunity to be able to do that. As far as cost goes, Tacoma Park has been a blessing to Montgomery County, please take that back, to Montgomery County in terms of the, our added tax base. When we were annexed, if you remember, we had the higher per capita, and we, and we're the highest taxed. So we, so they have some money to possibly look at it for us. At the same time, we're talking about size of the area and different things of that nature. Well, let's look at it. Some people are concerned about the technology being added and everything else. Let me show you something real quick. Y'all see this device? Okay. They used to have rooms that would fill up, just one app. So if you're concerned about, if you're concerned about size and different things, missing your amenities, you're not gonna miss it. Guess what? Because technology advances quite often. So we can make room for the technology, we need to make room for the students and the pool. So with that said, in the memorandum, the original memorandum, when they were talking about this, and they were talking about creating this overall sense of, of community for this thing, in the memorandum, it says, "Recognizing the opportunity to create a facility which will serve the greater need of the community." So I say, "Keep community first." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter.
I have some ad hoc comments, but first, my name's Denise Jones. I live in Ward 5, Ward 5, and I am here to advocate for the school program and keeping the pool. It's necessary to provide beginning swim instruction for students and community members who historically do not have much access and opportunity to learn how to swim. As an African American and as an American, we should all be cognizant of the long arm of history and the segregated water access for leisure use. My father, in fact, has started a sailing and water access program in Annapolis for under-resourced African Americans who've lived by the water and no longer have access. It's extremely important that this community continues to have water access. This past weekend, I did a workshop on the Underground Railroad at my family reunion, 205 strong. Of the participants who were there, of my aunt's and uncle's generation, none of them knew how to swim. Not any of them knew how to swim or had learned how in the seven-plus decades since my uncle died at 12 years old at Myrtle Beach in a riptide when the family had gone there for an outing. I'm disappointed in our newer residents who have said they don't care about the pool. Supposedly, you moved here because you saw yourself joining the progressive community here, which would consider the needs of the less wealthy, at least not be dismissive, dismissive as I have heard at some of the community meetings. I sincerely hope the city is a strong advocate for this community asset. And lastly, meet my daughter, my dear daughter, Emma Vera, who was a happy student at Tacoma Park Elementary and Piney Branch Elementary School, especially for the swim program. I asked Emma about the program, and she told me that the pool access made her proud of her school and of herself in having swim instruction in her school program. Learning how to swim saves lives, and I don't want that. And it saves lives, not just for the children, but for people of all ages. And I don't want us to lose that asset in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Honor Mashawn. I'm a Ward 1 resident. Also like to acknowledge the folks from MCPS as well. I'm a frequent user of the Piney Branch Pool. I appreciate its location. It's very convenient to me by bike, by walking, or by car, and I incorporate it into my regular exercise routine. And it is a nice place to be and to release and unwind sometimes after work. I also appreciate that it's an asset for the community. My son just recently finished up at Piney Branch Elementary School. He was able to access the pool both as part of his classes, his gym classes, but he was also able to access the pool with his after-care program as well. It gives the kids an outlet. It's appreciated. And one of the things I've appreciated about the pool is that you do have people from kind of all demographics and age groups that use the pool, benefit from the pool, and I think it's an important asset to the community. And I think it's something that we should incorporate in the future planning for the renovation of Piney Branch Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Terry Siemens, and I am, I'm a proud constituent of Council Member Gilbert and Ward 4. And I'm up here tonight at the insistence of my director, Ms. Joyce, that I call the council's attention to the posters sitting on the chairs in front of you. They have the signatures of many of the young children here in Tacoma Park that are hoping to see the pool in the, in the new school. And I also wanted to let the council members and the audience know that there is a flyer with more information about the pool on the table up there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tanya Decona. I'm in Ward 1, Jessica Landman area. I liked the comment that somebody put in support of the pool. They said, and maybe it was you, "Not everybody can afford a country club." And I thought that sentiment really hit home. I thought, I've been in Tacoma Park since the 1970s. My mother was a real estate agent here, Harriet Decona. And the point I'm making is that the credo of Tacoma Park is we're this progressive community, that we care about people from all different levels and with all different levels of ability. To me, this is very important, to keep this going. In addition to the fact that the Montgomery, I know we have the Montgomery County Aquatic Center. It's not for me. My community facility is for me, Piney Branch Pool. It's walkable, which means it's available to everybody and accessible to everyone, a vital feature. And it's fantastic that this unique pool serves both the students and the community. It doesn't get better than this. The one other thing I did not understand about the architectural plans, however, is if the pool would stay the way it is. And I don't, I don't think the people are here to answer that question, but I wasn't clear on whether it means the pool will absolutely be rebuilt, no matter what, or if the pool would stay the pool we have now. I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that question. I realized I had that question at the time, but wasn't in a position to ask. So in short, not everybody can afford a country club. It's available to the community from A to Z, and it's got the student community piece. Thank goodness, it's not nearly as loud as the Montgomery County Aquatic Center. Beautiful, but loud. This is our community prize. I hope we'll keep it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any? Come on down.
Good evening. Sue Miller, Ward 3. When I was the Piney Branch Elementary PTA president, the community rose up together in 2007 and '08 to save the Piney Branch Pool. Then we had to do it again in 2015. This year's petition to save the pool now has more than 700 signatures. But tonight, some historical context. In the 1969 agreement in which the city gave the county land to build the school, the county recognized that the density of affordable housing in this neighborhood merits county resources. The plan specified, quote, "Facilities for recreation, social services, health programs, and community use." They even put in dental and health clinics into the school, which are long gone. The large gym, large multipurpose room, and pool are what remain. But why a pool? In 1954, immediately after Brown versus Board of Education mandated desegregation of public facilities, white people began to form private swim clubs in our county and across the country. Author Heather McGee writes of how, quote, "Many cities closed their pools rather than commit to desegregation." Over the next decade, 125 public pools in the DC area shut down. Meanwhile, by 1959, 10 private members-only swim clubs had formed the Montgomery County Swim League. Many of those private clubs still exist today, and while they're no longer exclusively white, they remain predominantly white. As late as 1971, the Supreme Court ruled in Palmer versus Thompson that it was legal to drain public swimming pools to avoid desegregation. But in that very same year, our county took a stand for integration when they opened Piney Branch Public Pool for all residents. Today, black children ages 10 to 14 still drown at rates 3.5 times higher than white children. So we're glad the county built the Silver Spring Aquatic Center, but that new pool is not particularly accessible to this community. It requires a car, a parking fee, an able-bodied for walking, or considerable time on the bus to get there. the bus to get there. So I was very glad to hear from the architects that there is no problem fitting a top-notch new school, a school we all want as soon as possible, and an adult gym and a pool in the new plan. Now is not the time to abandon our commitment to racial equity. Instead, we must recognize, honor, and preserve the important legacy of this pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jacqueline Moore, and I live in Ward two. As a retired MCPS fourth grade teacher, I know teachers want the best possible schools because we want the best for our students. This includes classrooms with windows that both open and let in natural light, effective HVAC systems, storage, and staff parking. This retired teacher also wants to keep the Piney Branch Pool. The Stantec architects have assured the community that all these things, including the pool, are possible. MCPS used to recognize the need for teaching water safety and swimming skills to all students. When I began my career, all fourth graders were able to participate in the swim instruction unit, even if it meant boarding a bus to the nearest aquatic center for lessons. I was always more than a little jealous that Piney Branch had its own pool. I became even more jealous once the swim unit was taken out of the curriculum due to cost-saving measures in the early 90s. Piney Branch was able to continue teaching children to swim, but thousands of other children lost the opportunity for life-saving water and safety in swim lessons. Montgomery County's demographics have changed over the last four decades. Fewer and fewer families have the means to pay for swim lessons, much less to join a private pool. There's so much water in the District Maryland and Virginia, learning to swim is critical. Each MCPS school is a microcosm of its community. These communities share some commonalities, but each school has a different level of needs. Piney Branch is essentially an urban school. It has a tiny footprint and a structure that's long past its useful life. It is time to bring Piney Branch into the 21st century, and it's important to keep and celebrate the pool that serves the needs of this unique community. Speaking of the community, I was very upset that the outreach from MCPS regarding the feasibility study was at best limited. I was told that 300 postcards were mailed to residents and businesses nearest the school. Some of the many multifamily buildings on Maple Avenue have 150 to 200 units. How in the world could anyone think that 300 postcards would be enough? In addition, the materials that have been shared by MCPS, both online and via the mail, have been in English. There are a significant number of Amharic, Spanish, and French speakers in the community. I was told that MCPS couldn't change its outreach approach because they had to be sure to treat each school going through the feasibility process equally. Equal does not mean equitable. What works for Burtonsville and Damascus does not work for Piney Branch. MCPS needs to meet the community where they are in order to meet their needs. If I used the approach of the MCPS Office of Design and Construction in my classroom and treated each student equally rather than equitably, I would have been fired. If you did a head count of the people attending the recent PBS meetings, both in person and virtual, you would clearly see that the vast majority were white. The student population is 29% black, 17.9% Hispanic, and 42% white. The Asian, American Indian, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander populations are each just under 5%. The school's population is not a monolith. In closing, I urge Superintendent Taylor to choose a plan option that keeps the pool in place at Piney Branch Elementary. It's important to not have fewer community resources than we started with by the end of this project. This pool serves both students and the community. It needs to stay.
Thank you.
And while I've got 14 seconds, Ms. Carpenter, I know there's at least one person, Joanne Delaplane, who's waiting to get in virtually, and she hasn't seen herself show up yet. So just putting it out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Mitchell. I would be first to admit, I live in North Chevy Chase, so please forgive me for invading your meeting, but y'all may, so bear with me, thank you for the hospitality. Y'all may wonder why someone who doesn't live at Tacoma Park is even interested in this conversation around a local pool, and as I've been thinking, it's for two reasons. One, it's very personal for me. I learned how to swim when I was 11 years old, and I learned how to swim at my local community pool. That being able to learn how to swim eventually led me to know that swimming was a passion of mine, where I then became the captain of my swim team, oftentimes the only black boy, black person in an entire swim meet with dozens of schools out of me. So I stood, for some reason, I stood out like a light. But but it was also, for me, another reason this is important to me is that this is an equity issue. It's like what many folks have said, it's community pools like Piney Branch that enable to make sure that there's, that folks are truly accessible for the, it makes it truly accessible for the people who live there. In a time where many of us who are feeling increasingly isolated, spaces like Piney Branch Pool are more than amenities, they're essential. They break down barriers and remind us what community really looks like. There's also history here. Piney Branch was built in a time where most pools in this country, where in this county, were private clubs, as was mentioned, where spaces that will, to be honest, were set up and were not meant for me to enter into. So the reason why Piney Branch was built, because it was public, it was built with the intention of welcoming people and creating equity in a time of exclusion. And while Montgomery County in 2025 is far more inclusive than than what it once was, I'm going to be honest, equity is still out of reach for too many. In Tacoma Park, there are no nearby public pool alternatives, and the closest is the Silver Spring Aquatic Center, that was mentioned earlier, but that's more than two miles away with no direct bus access. So for families with young children or individuals with limited mobility, that's not just an inconvenience, it's a barrier. Closing the Piney Branch Pool would just, wouldn't just impact swimmers, it's also a public health issue. Tacoma Park is a racially diverse community with a large black and Hispanic population, and racial minorities in the United States drown, as was said before, at a two-to-one ratio, at least at a two-to-one ratio to white Americans. And in fact, according to the National Institutes of Health, black youth aged from 5 to 19 drown in swimming pools at a rate five times higher than white peers. That gap is driven by multiple factors, including socioeconomic barriers that limit access to swimming lessons and safe environments for many black children. And addressing those disparities requires a multifaceted approach, starting with preserving spaces like Piney Branch.
I am so sorry to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
I don't have a timer.
I'm wrapping up. If.
I'm sorry, because I think your time is up, but go ahead and finish.
Well, I just want to urge the council to preserve Piney Branch and invest in it and continue to be a place where kids can splash and neighbors can can interact. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, and I apologize for that. And then can we just make sure that we have a timer up? Right now, we see people that are on the Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Sessi, city council, city staff, and the MCPS representative, the representative, and all of you who care about Tacoma Park well-being. So my name is Ambraz Agosse. I'm from Watsis. I want to say something at least in support of my kid, because I see that they are fighting for others, not for themselves, because I don't even remember how many times they shoot. So I would like to remind the MCPS representative and all you decision-makers that Piney Branch Elementary School Pool is not just a pool, but there is a big history behind that school pool that we need to preserve. So please take in consideration, it was great, the presentation that you did with all scenario. I want you to please choose the option where we have the pool in school, pool inside, and do not choose the scenario or the option where there is no pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on down, Ms. Doris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for holding this important meeting to discuss the Piney Branch Pool and the renovation of the Piney Branch Elementary School. My name is Doris Duarte. I'm the assistant director of Tacoma Park Lunch and Learn. I'm here with the co-presidents and members of the board of directors for Tacoma Park Lunch and Learn. Lunch and Learn is an academic enrichment summer camp, which was, which has been using the Piney Branch Pool since 2013 and has served well over 1,000 students. During this summer, member of the underserved children have learned how to swim at the pool. One of our missions is to teach the students how to swim and prevent drownings. This year, we hired a swimming instructor who was a previous Lunch and Learn student and lifeguard who was on the Blair High School swimming team. Everyone deserves a chance to learn how to swim and be safe in the water. According to the CDC, black children ages 10 to 14 drown in pools, seven to six times more than white children. We say not out kids. By having the pool at Piney Branch Elementary School located in their community and walking distance from a number of large apartments, more students will learn to swim at a pool which is located in walking distance to their homes. Some have argued that students can go to the Silver Spring Pool taking the free ride on buses, but this won't work for larger groups of students like we have at Lunch and Learn. We have over 165 students, and we would have to rent buses to transport the students to the pools. It would cost approximately $30,000 a summer for us to rent buses to transport students to a different pool. $1,000 a day for three buses, 30 days. Notice that this is just the cost for transportation and not the immense cost to get into the pool. The Silver Spring Academy charges to use the pool, and they don't allow camps to liberalize their facilities. We either have to use Long Branch MLK, the two closest facilities, which do not always allow camps to visit. We would not be allowed to use our own teachers and the schedule, which allow only them to camp. It is crucial that the pool remain a community resource at Piney Branch School. We urge MCPS to include a pool in the final plans. Remember, the issue is about the children's welfare. Also, we submitted a two-minute video from the children telling you why they like the pool. We are here to represent and speak for the children who are at home in the bed because they got to go to school at nine o'clock. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Montgomery County Public School. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Troy Jacobs, Ward five resident, father of two MCPS students who attended Piney Branch Sims and now Blair. And I want to actually, not to be contrary, but I feel that I have to, is that I am very strongly supportive of demolishing the the school and rebuilding it. Unfortunately, given that we're going into a SIP process in the fall, I am very concerned with the options that have a pool. I've provided written comment and in further detail, but, you know, we are in a very tight fiscal environment right now at the county, state, and federal levels in terms of education, and eliminating the pool option will save money and actually allow us to achieve our educational outcomes. Piney Branch has faced serious challenges for a number of years, and we identified this, you know, during the pandemic, if parents and educators were already dealing with challenges in terms of children's safety, developmental, behavioral, mental health needs. And some of these options will actually better address that. We also have the problem in Tacoma Park with the demographic imperative that is gripping the sort of down county, eastern part of the county. While adjacent areas like Langley Park and Silver Spring have grown over the last 55 years, Tacoma Park's population has been stable, around 17,500 residents, peaking in 1970 at 18,507. This is where our surrounding jurisdictions have actually grown and have become incredibly younger. I mean, the median age here is 41.1 years, at Langley Park, it's 29.4, Silver Spring, 35.2. There is an incredible need for resources, school-based recreational facilities, and as we go into the SIP process, we need to be mindful that, in fact, you know, there was a boundary study that showed that there were stark disparities in terms of poverty in the surrounding school catchment areas. And the other thing that I would point out in the 10 seconds that I have is that, you know, if we want to have a pool, there's, there's ways to ensure community access, and this can include, including leveraging existing facilities like Long Branch, which could be upgraded. This is certainly the Silver Spring Pool.
I'm sorry, Troy, you're over time.
Okay, and there's other options that are in my written comments. I'm looking forward to discussing this further in the fall.
Thank you. Public comments? Come on down.
I want to start off with saying that it was really lovely to disagree with someone who I really respect and that I agree with on so much, and it feels really good that I can disagree with Troy and still think he's a really great neighbor and still agree with him on other things, and I hope that we all remember that we can agree on some things and disagree on other things, and I appreciated hearing his perspective. So thank you for coming out and having a different opinion than me, and maybe next time we'll agree on the, on another topic. So thank you. Thank you, MCPS, for coming out to Tacoma Park. We can be a lot, and we need you to keep going. We need a new school. My preference is for the school with the pool in it. As Doris was talking about, at Lunch and Learn, we cannot use the Silver Spring Aquatic Center. I reached out to them. I asked them about it. It's a no-go. And so I just want to make sure that the community understands that we would be giving something up, that we wouldn't be able to use this other pool that's somewhat nearby. As a family of four children, we did try joining a pool, and even if you have the money to buy a membership to a pool, it's not the same as being able to walk to a pool, which no one in Tacoma Park has. No one can walk to a pool, except for the pool that we currently have. And then I just want to clarify that as we're talking about the new facility, the new school, the new pool, that we need to make sure that we have a similar agreement for the people that are in the community that are using the pool to continue to use that pool. So Lunch and Learn would be looking to still use the pool. The camp that Joyce and Terry are working on is also going to want to be able to use that pool. Kids Adventures uses that pool. So just making sure that we're all still having the access to the pool, because it's not enough just to have a pool over there. We also need the access to the pool. So that is all that I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buddy Daniels, member, North Shore Oahu Lifeguard Association, some of the best lifeguards in the world. I wasn't one of them, but I was a pretty decent lifeguard in my time, and I did it for 40 years. I wasn't going to say anything tonight because I didn't think I'd get through it, but I'm going to try, because this Piney Branch Pool and Long Branch Pool are really, really personal to me and my family. My mother was on the, Opal Daniels was on the Maryland Ash Parking Board Planning Committee to get Piney Branch here, to get Long Branch here, because Tacoma Park and the southern part of this county did not have the facilities in the 1970s. My sister, Kaye Daniels Cohen, also worked with Sue Katz Miller a number of years ago to keep Piney Branch going. So it's definitely in the family. I was program director at Piney Branch for a number of years, and what everybody has said here means so much, and thank you for what you've said incredibly. I learned to swim there. I learned to swim there. It helped save me. Also, what is this community about but inclusiveness? What is that little six-lane, 25-yard pool about? Inclusiveness. Having a facility, it was an anchor of the community and certainly is becoming an anchor of the community again. And it's a small six-lane pool. It's a simple pool. I spent 40 years in the business as a consultant. There's so much you can do with it, the lessons, the lap swimming, the competitiveness, competitive teams. There are so many programs that existed in that pool and exist now and can exist again. So to even think about getting rid of that pool, I don't understand. I do, but I don't. And think about this, how many communities in this country of 17,000 people would want to have a six-lane, 25-yard pool? Think about that, and we've got it. And it's not going anywhere. When it was built, it was built extremely well. That That pool will last over 100 years, believe me. I know the gentleman who built it, I know how he did it. So, we really do need to keep that facility, keep it going, work it in with the new school for sure. But it can be such an asset to this community. 40 years ago, it was definitely an anchor, and it certainly will become an anchor again for the community, for the children, and for the adults, who I taught how to swim for 20 years and will come out of retirement if I can lose 10 pounds and teach again, because we had very specific programs. And bearing something in mind, adults, don't feel bad about not being able to swim. Over 40% of the Washington DC population cannot swim. And oh, by the way, what just happened Saturday night? We got a little water in here, didn't we?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you all so very much for what you've said.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I see little faces virtually. Awesome. I apologize, I missed you all because you take precedence, and we wanted to make sure we could hear your voices before bedtime. So, can we have the virtual, yes, Molly O'Donnell, yes.
Okay.
Molly, Molly.
No, 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 it's okay, it's okay.
Oh, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Molly. Yeah, it's okay, this is Ruby O'Donnell, go ahead.
My name is Ruby, and I'm seven years old. I think we should keep the pool, wait.
That's good.
Because I'm going to Piney Branch School soon, and I want to use the pool when I am a student there. We should also keep the pool, we should also keep the pool because some adults don't know how to swim. They can, they can learn how to swim at Piney, at Piney Branch. We should also keep it because when my mom and dad, and dad can't drive me, my, drive me to, to, to their pool, my, my friend Jackie can drive me to, drive, drive, oops, my friend Jackie can walk or drive me to the Piney Branch School. These are the, these are the reasons we should keep, we should, we should keep the pool open for, for everyone.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Do we have another commenter?
Yes.
And what's your name?
I'm Molly O'Donnell, and I am 10 years old, and I'm even more two. I go to Piney Branch Elementary School, the best school in many ways, including because of the pool. The first reason I think we should keep the pool is that people need to know how to swim. If, what if there's a flood? I know what you're thinking, there's not going to be a flood. But what if there's a flood like there was one last Saturday? What if somebody accidentally jumps into the deep end of the pool? What do they do if they don't know how to swim? Or what happens if somebody is waiting in a lake or ocean and they go into a deep part? What if they, what happens if they don't know how to swim? The second reason is that the Piney Branch Pool makes it easier for people to get to, get to a pool because it is close to where we live. If that pool goes away and it's burning hot outside, people want to have a place to go get, go get cool fast. Parents are often too busy to bring kids to, to a pool. So, it's important to have a pool enough, close enough to walk or ride your bike to when you need, need to cool off. Here's my third reason. I feel sorry for the kids who don't live near a pool. Sure, you could go to a different pool like the new aquatic center, but it costs more money and you have to pay for parking. It's too dangerous, it's too dangerous to walk the streets, the streets near the new aquatic center, especially if you're a kid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to the adults in the auditorium.
Shawanda and I are going to tag team, Jay Keller, Board Three.
Shawanda Oliver, Board Five.
And we are definitely in support of the pool. We're both the co-chairs of the Lunch and Learn Program Board, and this is a community asset. The Piney Branch Elementary School is a great community asset, the pool is a great community asset. And as we all know, when these things go away, like what happened with the gymnasium at the fire station, they don't come back. You lose them forever. And so, the fact that we've got a pool that's walkable, that's accessible for everyone in the community, regardless of their ability to pay, be able to get in, for the camp, for programs like Lunch and Learn, this is not something we can easily replace once it's gone.
Right, I agree. I moved here in 1983, my three daughters, my two grandkids, and now I have a great-grandson that will probably be using the pool as well, hopefully. And I just wanted to say, please keep the pool, I know we need the school, but get a plan that has a pool with the school.
Yeah, it's expensive to replace the pool, but it only gets more expensive. And if we lose the pool this time and we want to redo it again in the future, it'll cost a lot more, and we won't be able to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter.
Hi, I'm Jim Correa, Board One. I wasn't planning to speak tonight. I'm a regular user of the pool. Everybody that's come before has talked about the benefits of the pool in so many eloquent words that I can't have anything to add. I did, however, come up to say that to remind people that the issue is really the cost versus the benefits to the community. And I was kind of surprised by the 15% number that was kind of thrown out as an estimate of the cost, and it's a fairly significant number. But what I wanted to emphasize was that the cost is not just something that's for our present benefit, it lasts for a long time. The last speaker's just kind of alluded to that. It's really important that we, even though times are tough and are likely to get tough in the near future, this is a long-term investment that is really worthwhile for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no more comments in the room, we will move to our virtual, our adult virtual commenters. Let's see who we have up first. Wonderful, Joanne Della Plane, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Circe and council members. Over 60 years, my mother, Esther Della Plane, wrote letters to The Post and Evening Star urging the Montgomery County Council to end desegregation at the Glen Echo Amusement Park. One factor she cited was the unequal county practice of busing white kids to the Crystal Pool at Glen Echo and sending African-American students to the P Street Public Pool in DC. In the summer of 1960, a boycott of the park began, spearheaded by five courageous students from Howard University, who sat down on the merry-go-round and got arrested. That same day and for the rest of the summer, Montgomery County communities of Bannockburn, Cabin John, Scotland, and many others picketed to desegregate the park. At age seven, along with my mom, dad, and four siblings, I was one of those picketers. By the summer of 61, the park was desegregated. My mother continued to lobby the county council to pass a public accommodations law. All citizens of this county can be proud that Montgomery County passed its initial equal public accommodations law in 62, two years before President Lyndon Johnson signed the federal law. However, Montgomery County did not build any public schools until 68, and then they only built two. This resulted in far fewer pools in black and brown neighborhoods than in white neighborhoods, and far fewer swim lessons and swim team experience for black and brown students. The Piney Branch School Pool did not open until 71. Every child deserves the opportunity to learn how to swim and access to a closed-by swimming pool. As a lifelong citizen of Montgomery County, a former MCPS student, a current yoga instructor and former member of a swim team, I attest that swimming teaches coordination, builds muscle tone, improves lung capacity, and helps students de-stress and cool down. Being on a swim team develops individual talent, contributes to collective teamwork, and builds leadership skills and self-confidence, all things we want for our students. Teaching students to swim can avoid drowning accidents and save lives. Seven children with autism died from drowning in '24. I strongly urge MCPS to choose one of the A options or retains the pool as you renovate and modernize Piney Branch Elementary School. Let's continue the county's proud legacy of equal accommodations for all our students and citizens. We need more public pools, more access to swim lessons, more lives saved, more public health, health not less. Preserve the pool. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So, the last speaker tonight is Tiffany Rod, well, Tiffany Rogers is the last online speaker.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate exactly what the majority of the people who spoke tonight have stated. No voices have been more eloquent, in my opinion, than the young voices. I was a former teacher for almost seven years at Tacoma Park Middle School. The students would talk about the pool, they would walk to the pool. There can be no greater good for the community than something that is educating as well as helping students' minds, bodies, and, and, and all while, you know, allowing them to feel like they belong. And without this resource, without the, the access and to make things more equitable, I think you would be doing a serious disservice to the community. Montgomery, Montgomery County can do better. Tacoma Park deserves this, they deserve the access, they deserve the affordability, and those students deserve to be able to walk to where they can learn and where they can also swim. So, I strongly hope that Montgomery County and Superintendent Taylor, that you continue to make this resource available to the community. The wins outweigh any negative financial deficit that we may have in the future. You cannot lose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments. We did it a little different tonight because there's a lot of people. I just want to ask my colleagues to indulge me with another modification to the agenda where we forego council comments and we forego the city manager's comments. If the city manager wouldn't mind posting those comments and providing them to council, and then that way, we can move into our voting session and then move into the main event, which I think a lot of people may actually want to stick around for, is when we are actually talking about the resolution. Are there any objections to that? Okay, wonderful. Let's move to our voting session this evening. The first item is the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY26 Stormwater Management Budget Amendment Number One. First, we will need to vote to convene as a Stormwater Management Board. Would someone like to move that we are, thank you, Councilmember DeBala, do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, as a second. All those in favor of us convening as a Stormwater Management Board, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right, we are now the Stormwater Management Board, and we are moving to our first item, which is the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY26 Stormwater Management Budget Amendment Number One. Would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Okay, Councilmember Gilbert moved, Councilmember Schlegel second. Are there any points of discussion from city staff regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Are any points of discussion for council? Stormwater. Yep. All right, seeing none. Councilmember Schlegel, did you have a, okay, perfect. Seeing none, and given that we're hybrid with a clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman.
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak.
Aye.
Councilmember Weselak.
Aye.
Mayor Circe.
Aye. We are now at the next item, which is the First Reading Ordinance approving the FY26 Budget Amendment Number One. Would someone like to move it?
Moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Turning to staff, are there any points of discussion on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are three, as noted in the cover sheet and in the attachment. And Finance Director Chung is available online. But there are three departments that have some adjustments from the time this was last reviewed at the work session. For Public Works, it's capital improvement category, general fund, equipment replacement expenditure, Public Works. And the reason for the amendment is reappropriate funds for an HVAC control system. The amount is $108,506. The next department with an adjustment was the Library, Special Revenue Fund. This pertains to cable grant and library construction. And the reason for the amendment is to reappropriate unused funds due to FY25 project delay, and the amount is $1,012,302.57. Also, Director Jessica Jones is available online if there's any questions. And finally, Communications Department, funding source is a special revenue fund. This pertains to cable grant capital improvement projects. And the reason for the amendment is to reappropriate unused funds due to FY25 diaphragm replacement and media lab project delay, and that amount is $194,226. So, these are all adjustments that differ from the last presentation. And we have staff standing by if there's any specific questions about those, and Director, including Director Chung, with any other questions in addition to those changes.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Landman, is that an old light?
Kind of. I just wanted to ask whether the HVAC has anything to do with the recent Pepco problem or is this just reappropriation?
It is mostly a reappropriation, however, the contract of Siemens that's installing the HVAC controls did make some repairs. It wasn't a part of their initial project, but it made sense to have that addressed as a part of the project as it, as it is currently structured.
Okay, Councilmember DeBala.
Just clarifying that the special revenue funds for the library are funds that were going to be spent on a specific work in fiscal, in the last fiscal year, and we're just transferring the money.
These are not new funds, this is just a transfer from the previous.
And the work is the same planned, it just has.
Right, because the library project is not finished, did not finish in '25, we need to convert those money to FY26.
Excellent. Okay, seeing no more lights or points of discussion, seems like we're ready to call the vote, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Right, because the library project is not finished, did not finish in '25. We need to convert those money to FY26.
Excellent. Okay, seeing no more light through points of discussion. Seems like we're ready to call the vote. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Aye.
Councilmember Weslek?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving to the, the last item in our voting session, the consent agenda. As a reminder, the items that are in the consent agenda are voted on with a single motion unless a member of the city council requests to pull an item for individual discussion and vote. What's someone, and the consent agenda includes resolution providing for appointments to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Board of Elections, Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, Emergency Prepartness Committee, Ethics Commission, Grants Review Committee, Recreation and Community Engagement Committee, Sustainable Maryland Committee, and a resolution providing for appointments to the Tree Commissions. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Any points of discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Aye.
Councilmember Weslek?
Aye.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move to our first work session. Just want to quick check to make sure, because we've been going since 6:30 today, people. Do we need a break? Okay, let's do, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna reconvene in 10 minutes. Let's give ourselves 10 minutes. Thank you. We have all, all of our council to the, can we get council and staff so we can start discussions again? All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us again this evening. We are moving into our work session portion of the meeting. The first item is the Piney Branch Elementary School Feasibility Study Preferred Option. And I just want to kind of introduce the resolution. First, I want to thank Councilmember Weslek and Councilmember Landman. I know that there's been just a lot of language that has been flying to get us to this point. The goal of this resolution, as it was developed, was to serve three purposes. First is to, initially to communicate to the superintendent and the school board as well as the county council, what our preferred option of the options that have been presented to the council is. Second is to clearly communicate what the priority building or, or concept attributes that we think are the most important, and we want to stress. Third is to make sure that it is clear that the holding school, and I know we did not discuss this with MCPS, but it's in large part because it's not the right time. but it's in large part because it's not the right time necessarily to be talking about holding schools. Um, but what we wanted to make sure that we were able to do is to communicate to all of those, um, parties involved at the county level that we really want to urge MCPS to, um, identify and select a holding school when it is time for construction in the city, um, that is closer to the city and not at the Grosner location. So, um, we've received some, um, friendly amendments. Um, and then there's a couple of, of points that we may want to discuss. Um, and we can then open the floor for any other items, um, worth mentioning. Uh, for, uh, and I just realized I did not email the revised, I'm looking at council member Weslek because he's working on this right before this meeting, um, email the, um, the track changes version of the, um, the resolution to council member Hansak. Um, and so just, uh, council member Weslek has access to the latest version. And if, if you wouldn't mind sharing that, council member Weslek, thank you very much. So, the, uh, a couple of the big things, um, of importance, others are a little on the smaller side, but, um, wanting to make sure that we communicated the need for the above, the education spec, um, dimensions for the, um, for the gymnasium. And I know, um, council member Gilbert, that was a point, um, that you raised. We've added a whereas clause, um, thanks to, um, uh, colleagues, um, to make sure that it's clear that the current gym that's in at Piney Branch Elementary School is above the education specs for, um, an elementary school of their size. We also adjusted the first where, um, the first resolve, the last bullet of the first resolve clause to make it a little clearer. So it now says can, um, continued student and community access to recreational facilities such as the indoor pool for recreational and lap swimming and indoor gymnasium that meets county guidelines. Um, and I think this is, uh, I think this might have been a typo because we were working and Piney Branch Pool is just off here somewhere. Um, so we will tweak that. Sorry, we were trying to address last minute comments quite quickly. So, the, uh, other piece was about making sure that we were able to communicate the split level design, um, and the need for high energy efficiency equipment. Um, and I think the other, other edits were pretty, pretty friendly. One thing that I do think would be helpful, there was one point that I believe council member Dibala raised about whether or not we want to actually select an option, like a preferred option based on what was presented to the council. And/or do we stick with just the attributes of, um, of the design? Um, and so I do want to kind of open that up for discussion, um, so that we can, and then have a discussion around where we're leaning in terms of, um, an actual option. Yeah, I think that's the, the most pressing thing. Um, hold on one second, let me, um, council member Dibala and, uh, council member Schlegel. Um, okay, council member Dibala.
So, if I may, depending on when this, when you, when this needs to be done. Um, so I, I am thinking if we want to have this done next week, that we might not have full time that we'd like to have to get feedback on all the, the different As and Bs and instead say, instead of saying which design we prefer, 4A through to B, whatever, we, we simply urge MCPS to pick it, to, to pick designs that prioritize these characteristics. That's my proposal, but, um, I don't know for sure if it's possible to finalize this. You want to finalize this next week, right? Not wait till September?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, uh, council member, uh, Schlegel?
Um, yes, um, quick circle back, this, in the whereas, it now mentions council member Gilbert's, uh, expressed interest in the larger than standard gymnasium, but not in the therefore be resolved. Could we make sure that, it says an indoor gymnasium that meets county guidelines? Could, could we change that to an indoor gymnasium that maintains the 1969 and 70 agreement or something?
Yeah, I'm thinking that for this last, um, bullet, that it, it will need to be split into two separate bullets. One specifically devoted to the pool, um, as was the original version, and then the second, um, or vice versa, and the other specifically related to the gymnasium.
Great, and then so back on topic, I, I think we would need more information to know whether 3A or 4A really is preferable, because I, I can't really see the dimensions. Uh, you know, I, I had come into this evening thinking that 4A had looked best when I'd seen all the previous presentations and, and the data they would present about classroom size and, and things of that nature. Um, so I, I just don't know, I just don't know if I'm sure now. I'm looking at the schematic and wondering how the library fits in each space, what size the library is. I'm also thinking about with the pool, uh, the access, the, the independence of that structure and the access to it and whether that's the same with 3A or with 4A. I think when I asked the question earlier, he said 3A would be more difficult to, to provide independent access and operation of the pool, like during school hours and things.
Yep, um, I, I will say, based on the presentation tonight, I am definitely leaning towards 4. Um, one, that would be more energy efficient, it would basically be more energy efficiency upgrades that would be allowed. Two, it was clearly communicated that it wouldn't be, um, as much of a, a price difference. In fact, the three with the renovation may actually be more costly than doing a complete rebuild. And, uh, it still would meet all of the education specs and possibilities for exceeding the ed specs, um, in some cases. So, um, I'm leaning a little bit more towards, you know, the premium option, which isn't necessarily that much of a premium, which is, um, the rebuild. Council member Weslek?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to speak in, in favor of us picking a specific option. Um, I think that, sure, there's things that we can know about it, um, but I think what, one of the most important things we, as the, as this body can do is lead by example for the communities, that we can have a unified voice to be the most effective, to get a, a much better school building for our community. So, I, so I'm just really in favor of us picking one. I, I too am in favor of 4A. I think that that seems to be the best and it gives us the most. But, but really, I, I want to argue in favor of picking something because, um, I think that would really help, uh, for our community to be able to, to get behind one voice.
Thank you, council member, um, Weslek, and I also just want to remind folks that all of the options includes various, uh, various, um, aspects of all, you know, there are very few options that don't touch upon these items. So it basically means give us whatever, plus a pool and a big gym. And I think that, I think that, you know, being a little bit more specific sends a message that we recognize that there are trade-offs and, and we have a preference in terms of what those trades, trade-offs are. Council member Landman?
So, in a conversation with, uh, the gentleman who led the, um, meeting earlier, I did just get a little bit more information than he wanted to share in the larger meeting that, that suggested that keeping the existing pool is quite a bit cheaper. It's half the price of building a brand new pool. So, I mean, one of the, he, he said 15%, but it's half that if they retain the old pool. And, and so it is something of, as, as council member Weslek is saying, we, if we are very specific and we, and I, I mean, my inclination is exactly the same as yours. I like, uh, the number four, uh, in part just the design is more appealing to me and it gives more of an open space around the building and, and provides more design options, uh, to the exterior and more, more options for the way that we use that plaza numerous times during the school year for events like, um, we had, you know, for night out and so forth. It brings ideas to mind for what we could do with it as a community. Uh, but I just, I'm not really sure whether we give ourselves a better chance for succeeding with maintaining both of these, you know, the pool and the larger gym if we somehow structure what we call for, uh, by pointing to another option that's less expensive, because he also said that there is a continuum of costs. I mean, it's not surprising from cheapest to most expensive that goes from one to four, just as you would expect. Even though he, what was weird was that he said it was more expensive to renovate than to build new, because I was then thinking, does that mean that 4A would be cheaper? But, but no, uh, it's not. So, um, that, that would argue for the, pointing to the attributes that we want to see included and not check, selecting an option. So I'm, I, that's not helpful in reaching a decision, but I thought it was important to, to say that this is, that the price differential is substantial if we, if we stick with the existing pool and renovate it rather than build a new one.
Um, but, but I would, I would argue that it would be different if the current pool was in a proper location for security purposes. And so it was also communicated that one of the major challenges right now, um, is the egress. And so the options that were presented before us that included aspects of keeping the pool kind of in its current position would still have those security issues with the egress. So, what, what I'm not understanding is, I understand, like, I'm, I'm ready to fight for, for the pool, but I think it is, um, I think it is a lot, um, easy, it's, in my mind, an easier advocacy sale to say, we have all of these issues, the current infrastructure for the pool is not lack, is lacking. We don't have the necessary, um, ventilation, we need more access and access needs to be improved. It would actually be better if we had parking that was kind of separated a little bit more so that people who need to go to the pool, um, which is what 4A is saying, people who need to go to the pool can park a little closer to the pool because there's a separate entrance versus people who need to go to the elementary school. So I think that there are quite a few aspects of the actual design components that are being presented that gives a little bit more, um, room for us to be able to say, look, we recognize, and maybe it's a matter of wording, we recognize we don't have full information regarding costs, but based on the information we have right now, we prefer 4 with the pool. And if that is not an option, we are asking you to prioritize these attributes for whatever you select. Uh, council member, uh, Gilbert?
I just want to remind everybody, um, just for our thought process, that, um, option 4 did not include the larger sized gym and it require, would require additional funding, so. It did not, um, and that was the only option that did not have the larger sized gym, so. Just food for thought.
He said he was going to provide, uh, and kind of a alternative, like a 4A1, so that they could include that.
With the extra 26,000.
We would need to specify that, yeah.
26,000 was the number.
2600 square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and just as a reminder, although, um, it, it's my understanding that, uh, many of the options, and I don't have the presentation where they actually do the side by side between the ed spec, um, maybe I do, between the ed spec and the, um, and where it would be under each option. But the, um, the big thing with aspects of the gym, um, is that I don't think many of the options included, um, something that would be as large. It, it was a little larger, but I don't know if it was, it was, it was being shown from the perspective of what the ed spec is for an elementary school and what percentages would be higher, like, like this would, this option would be 25% higher than the ed spec. But it wasn't clear that that 25% higher would actually be the, the complete dimensions of the gym as it is today. I think if, if we want the gym to be the same size regardless of what they select, um, then we, we, we just need to make that very clear in that resolution.
Ed spec is?
The, the, the specs, the, um, specs, um, that are required for a school based on the size of the school and the student population is what the Department of Education requires. Uh, council member, um, council member Schlegel?
Uh, let's see, oh, um, oh, right, the, the 4A, yeah, I also am leaning towards 4A and I, I wanted to make that clear that, um, but it's just that I, I think we should do our due diligence and make sure we look at those specs, um, so that we can, we can say with confidence that there's not some huge shortfall in terms of, say, classroom size between 3A and 4A. It also seems to me that with 4A, we are advocating for a brand new pool, which is a very nice thing. And also, uh, I heard Mr. Jacobs say, um, the first part of his comment, he was talking about an additional cost for the pool, but he was also bringing up, um, his awareness of demographics in other neighboring school districts in this part of the county. And to me, it seems like an, an, an argument in favor of 4A is that it may allow easier access for neighboring schools if they decide to implement swim programs, um, as part of their PE, that they could swing over here, pull in and, and use it as well. So it could become an amenity more important than just for Piney Branch.
Thank you. Council member Hansak?
Thank you so much. I hope my noise levels in the background are not too loud. Um, I, I'm just now getting a look at the revised resolution, so I'm sorry if I'm speaking not correctly to that, but, um, I, I want to be clear that I, I prefer option 4A barring not knowing how much all of this is really going to cost. However, I think that, um, and, and it, and it would be my preference that the way that our resolution ends up getting structured is that somewhere near the top, in addition to pointing out the per capita, um, space issues, challenges that that site faces, I think there's a real need to point out that per capita recreational space limitations of this particular school campus. And I think that would help to make the case, council member Gilbert, for what I think is a very important issue. We have severe recreational and learning space constraints in, in, on this school site. And I think that that is so, so important, given the history of this site and the way, and the way that it is currently serving our student population. So if we were to be able to, um, I, I'm happy to help with this this week. But in something else on the whereas clause, and then going down to the be it resolved section, I think we could put in something that, uh, in, in the last bullet point that doesn't just speak about the importance of the swimming pool, but also speaks about the importance of an expanded recreational space in the form of a gymnasium and a swimming pool. Um, and, and, you know, whatever ultimately is most cost effective. I also particularly think that, um, both of the designs in 4 contain that roof, uh, roof garden space that to me is really, really essential for expanding the, the green footprint of the school, if you will, for recreational spaces for the children. Um, but, but it is important to me that our resolution is very clear that our, that our number one goal is that we, our number one goal, I think, given learning disparities, should be about, um, making sure that this school is replaced with a school facility that is much superior to what we have currently because of learning disparities. And secondarily, we have recreational disparities, but they are both very, very important for learning and for equalized equity issues.
Council member Schlegel?
I, I remembered another point which relates to learning disparities, but the physical design of the two options, 3 and 4. And I, the, uh, the architect spoke at one of the meetings about how in 3A, you have southeast facing windows on at least eight classrooms. In 4A, you have southwest facing windows. And not only is that an energy savings because you're not getting the sun heating up those rooms in the morning, but I can tell you as a teacher that, from an instructional standpoint, um, and that when the temperature of that room rises and when kids can't see a, a projector, for example, because of the glare coming in the windows, it is quite different. And I, I do appreciate 4A as a teacher because it also provides that shaded courtyard. And I, I do appreciate 4A as a teacher because it also provides that shaded courtyard space that Councilmember Hansak just mentioned.
So I want to do a quick show of hands really quickly because I want to make sure that we have some direction. And I know Councilmember, Councilmember Westlech has been gracious enough to help you with this and, because I will be traveling to Cambridge on Friday, but I'll try to do what I can tomorrow. So, real quick, how many councilmembers would prefer for us to specify a actual option in the resolution? We can provide the necessary caveats based on the information available to date. Are, are there folks that are in favor of us specifying an actual option amongst those that are presented? Okay. I see Councilmember West, okay, so I see a majority. Okay, so now let's talk about which option we want to make sure that we're specifically calling out. I, I have my own biases. I know it's a lot. I know it's going to be a lot of money, even though I don't know what the money, what the money amount is, but I, I shoot for the moon and have somebody tell me no. So I am in favor of 4A. If, that's the one with the pool, right? I am in favor of, of 4A.
I'd like to impose a 70% tariff and then we can, we can argue it down from there.
Are there any other options?
Mayor, I have a question. Do we have an answer on the issue about the per capita space? And I'm sorry if I'm a little behind on some of our, our materials, if, if anyone knows the answer to that. I just want to make sure that in specifying 4A and saying that is my preference, that in fact, we are getting either equal or greater per capita, you know, footprint with that one as compared to the other designs.
Yep. That was, yeah, so that was, that was a question that I believe Councilmember Hansak, that you asked during the meeting. I followed up and the answer was that the 4A provides the ed spec in terms of classroom size. And if I remember correctly, I believe they say it actually was, was more than the ed spec.
I believe she said that it actually accommodated the estimated growth, which was like another 44 students or something like that. That was the response.
And in comparison to the other plans, it, it was equal or greater? I have the, if I'm looking at the proper documents, the classroom ed spec for 3A, the, the ed spec is, is at 27,650. 3A is 28,600, which is an additional three, up by 3%. 4A is 27,605, so it's near identical. So 3A has slightly more classroom space, but both are at, or slightly above what the, what the specification would be.
And, and just as a, it wasn't included in the presentation that they provided, but on the website, the webpage for this project, MCPS, in those presentations, after each option lists all of the attributes and the ed, ed spec for each and how their design might address either increase, decrease, or keep it flat behind what the recommended, the requirement in terms of space is for each of the options. So it sounds like, just to try to move us forward, it, it sounds like here are some proposed edits that we would need to make. I'm going to do a quick show of hands. Would folks like for us to proceed with the, with the resolution, including option 4A?
May I make a, I, I appreciate the way someone a few minutes ago said, we could endorse 4A with a sort of provided that, or assuming that this concept works out to address all the concerns identified in this resolution.
Yep, that, yep, that was me. I just want to make sure like.
I didn't know if it was you or.
And then I'll kind of read back the, the language.
Sorry.
Is, is 4A what we, what we want to put in? Okay, so it sounds like 4A. So it sounds like, when we get to revising things, that first whereas clause may be tweaked to, now therefore be it resolved, that based on the information available to date, the Tacoma Park City Council prefers design 4A, period. The council, and then we can just kind of pick up, the council urges MCPS in its review to prioritize the following renovation characteristics regardless of the option selected. And then we list our items.
And that would include breaking up the bullets?
And that would.
Have a separate bullet for the gym?
Exactly.
Specifying the alternative larger gym.
Correct. So then it would be, now therefore be it resolved, that based on the information available to date, the Tacoma Park City Council prefers design option 4A. The council urges MCPS to prioritize the following renovation characteristics regardless of the final option selected, classroom sizes, increased parking spaces, yada, yada, yada. And then the last one we're going to break up, and it will be, one related to Piney Branch Pool, maintaining Piney Branch Pool as indoor, we'll, we'll figure out the language, we'll tweak the language. And then the second, the, and then there'll be a separate bullet regarding the gym. Councilmember Schlegel?
Councilmember Hansak, you had, you had emphasized that we should have, we should be talking about learning deficiencies and recreational deficiencies and then circle, in the whereas's, and then circle back to that at this point. Is there some language you would propose?
Thank you for that opening. I don't feel I'm in a position to do that verbally right now, just sitting where I am, but I'd be happy to put some things into writing. I'm, I'm generally in support of the direction that we're traveling. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, in the whereas clause at the beginning, when you were just mentioning the other things to add, she, Madam, Councilmember Hansak had suggested a whereas clause noting the deficiencies in outdoor recreational facilities as well as the deficiencies in the, in the, in the school itself. Yeah. I think Councilmember Schlegel was talking about in the, in the be it resolved clause, but I think we need to have both, like the, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there would be a, so is it generally or recreation spaces that pertains to the school?
So where the PBS is unique in being the smallest school, a school with a small, small acreage, I would, it could be included in that very clause, small acreage and, and very limited outdoor recreational space or something like that, could be a way to do it, I suppose, or it could have, I think that would, as opposed to a separate bullet, a separate whereas clause, might be sufficient, but maybe Councilmember Hansak could take a look at it and see what she thinks.
If, if I may point of order to add on, Councilmember Lammon? Sorry if I'm not, I'm not hearing very well. But I, I, I do think it's important that we point out that this school has zero recreational space of its own, zero. So that, it deserves mention up in the whereas clause, next to the, the square footage of the school.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Westlech?
Yes, similarly, I just wanted to add to say, outdoor recreation, there, there isn't, there isn't any. If we want to emphasize recreation, I think that that is how we can then bolster the pool and a larger gym, you know, because there is no outdoor recreation.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like we're flagging that, that whereas to see how we want to deal with outdoor recreation space because we have the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, whereas that highlights the gym for recreational activities and we can, we can maybe tweak that. I want us to, so thank you all so much. I feel like the major, just one major decision down in terms of option and characteristics. The other piece, I just want to have us spend a second to talk about because we only have, trying to keep us on task, five minutes, is the holding school.
Before we leave, before we leave the options, may I? So I had a couple of other suggestions on the whereas. What I'll do is type them up and send them to you and.
Yep.
Amy, and to be considered the next, for the next version.
Yep.
I'll, I'll do the same.
Okay. Okay, and so if we can, just in the, in the interest of, of everyone's sanity, if I can get those, those edits from folks, we really need them by COB tomorrow. I know it's a late night, but in order for us to make sure that we have enough time to review them, edit them, give folks a markup, so they'll be ready to go by Friday, because there's a lot of folks that are watching this, we need all edits tomorrow. The next item is the holding school component. And I will say, I've, I've, I've been in conversations with MCPS regarding the holding school matter. And one of the major challenges is you don't know what may be available in the future. And so one of the things that we are really trying to push is for them to consider those locations that are currently owned by MCPS or the county that are closer to the city, for them to consider those items, those locations for a potential holding school for us when construction happens, which could be up to three plus years, two plus years from now. So we wanted to make that point really clear, but also wanting to make sure that folks understand that we will ultimately need to have this conversation again because depending on where other schools, when they are having their feasibility work done or where their construction is happening, it may impact what may be available for us. But I just want to make sure, I don't know, Councilmember Westlech, if you have any points to add on that point?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add, because I think it's in the context of this is all going to the superintendent for the capital improvement plan. And I think we want Piney Branch to be on the list. And hopefully, some other location where down county gets put on the list to be renovated and upgraded and made into a holding center so that we potentially could use it or just other parts of this area, because there's just a very limited options for the holding schools. So we, we are the only ones that are looking at options that are very far and require our kids to be on major, major highways.
Great. Okay, are there any other points of discussion on, on the resolution? Just as a reminder, if you please provide your comments via an actual markup of the document, everyone should have received, oh, well, we'll make sure that we send that version out to folks because we worked on it right before this meeting, so that everyone will have the latest version and you can turn around any comments that you have. Okay. All right, seeing no additional comments, we're going to move on to the next work session this evening. And that is the Proposed Resolution on Public Safety, the Public Safety Task Force Work Plan. Okay. So I'm going to, first, I just want to say thank you so much to Deputy City Manager Hup T. She, she dealt with me and my, trying to figure out how to put all of this stuff out. So I do appreciate your support, even if it was just therapy. The, the big thing was, one of the challenges that I'm trying to, or I'm hoping we can tackle with this resolution, we hear time and time again, whenever we have our task force, and they produce reports that have a whole slew of recommendations. It is unclear what the council has done to address those recommendations, what the council has agreed to. It is often spread out amongst multiple, either council meetings or presentations from staff, and it's really difficult to bookend what we're doing in terms of addressing committee task force reports. So this resolution really is designed, there are 50 recommendations from the Public Safety Task Force. This, this resolution is designed to try to, based off of all of the presentations we've had with this council on the recommendations, to have us be able to say definitively which recommendations this council feels have been adequately addressed by staff. And it's either through the updates to policies, procedures, practices, or any council decisions, or any external factors that we think the recommendation is complete, closed, or ongoing as a part, a regular part of a city function. So we, we're trying to list those and, and right now, tentatively, it's like 28 of those 50. Then the other goal is to try to identify which recommendations that are in progress that may require further action by the council down the line. And it kind of helps with establishing future agendas for, for the council in order to address those recommendations. And then lastly, it sets up a cadence for staff to report out on the status of recommendations that have been addressed. So we ultimately will have a document that can span multiple councils that would make it a lot easier for people to understand what we've done, when the decision was made, what's still outstanding and what's left to do. So, so there's a few items on, there's a few items on this list that were a little, a few items that I just wanted to check with folks about in terms of whether or not we agree based on the council conversations that have occurred recently, that they are in fact, complete. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my highlighted version of this item. I'm not seeing the highlights.
Do you want us to read you the highlighted numbers?
I'm looking for the, the version of the resolution with the highlights, where I highlighted the items. I will just open up my computer.
Yeah, you sent it to me.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Sorry, I have a lot of paper here. So there were a few items that was going through just to try to make sure that we were adequately capturing aspects of the discussions that we've had over the last couple of, of meetings. And so one was, there was item 20, an officer may not search a vehicle or residence unless they have appropriate probable cause or they obtain written informed consent in language with which the driver understands. And if I remember correctly, that was one where it is already consistent with federal and state laws, the Tacoma Park officers may only conduct a search for appropriate probable cause or must obtain written informal, and, and formal consent in the language understood by the driver. And I just wanted to make sure that there was no follow-up questions about that one. I don't know why I had it flagged in my notes. It could be totally wrong. Item 20.
In the complete, closed, drawn.
Mm-hmm. And I could not remember for the life of me why we had it closed. I, I think it was closed, but I don't know if it was something around language or my notes were just wrong. And if no one remembers, that means it's in the right spot. I think it's in the right spot. Okay, so I will, I will cross that one out. The other is the task, item number 30, the task force was unified in their agreement that emergent and rapidly changing policing technologies are an important issue deserving of additional study and public input. Now, this one, if I remember correctly, we talked about moving. moving aspects of advancing advanced technology. So we talked about AI and the like. And it was included as part of the completed from the staff notes, but it was, if I remember correctly, the council was requesting for us to have a broader conversation about technologies. It's not just related to policing, but perhaps broader to include more more city, city offices. And I see the city manager has, you have your mic on. Did you want to comment on this one?
Yeah.
Sure, thank you. Yes, this is one of those where we've done some briefings on technologies such as the license plate reader and the cameras, red light camera. We've talked about to a certain extent the stop sign cameras and certainly the speed camera programs. Those are all technologies. And those in the past, mayor councils have received public briefings and other information pertaining to those. There's always going to be some emerging technologies and certainly we're keeping a close tabs on artificial intelligence and its applications and perhaps other technologies. There's various things that we do, just even putting our brand new electronic HRIS system in place. I mean, there's a number of things. There will always be that. So we felt as staff that, you know, due to the good number of technologies that have already been briefed to council and the fact that we're pledging to do address others as they emerge, that that kind of fits into the both completed and continuous. That's a continuing thing. We're assuming there will always be some new technologies and we absolutely will brief council on anything that will be applicable to our operations. So to us, that felt with both reasons that this was the right place for it. But we're certainly willing to hear any alternate thoughts on that and ultimately take direction.
Councilmember Lamben, I see your light.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had, this is a general comment about this list, but it applies to this one in particular. I I felt that we had identified some specific issues about this that went beyond what the city, I agree with what you, how you're characterizing this, characterizing this to a certain extent, city manager, but I did think we had talked about other aspects of our data collection processes that we use that had to do with data security, especially that had arisen from some of the things that ICE has been doing and 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 that had been then further elaborated by delegate Moon having to do with how well our data systems are secured from from private systems and what they sell and what they, what, how, how they can be scraped by, you know, some of the electronic Doge type people out there. So I I found that this list, it mixes together apples, oranges and mangoes in that some of the, I felt that it needed some kind of sort of a status statement as in completed or infeasible. For example, there were several things listed here where, as it turned out, we can't do it because it's not within the capability of our law like, or like, for example, in the one that listed what we ought to do with speed cameras, it's become overtaken by events because we no longer have speed cameras. And and to just sort of list them all together is not really, I I felt like it left a lot of, it's, it sort of didn't really clarify things for future generations. And we did a lot of work to identify the status of all of them. And so in some respects, I felt that it was, it was unhelpful because it just didn't kind of, it left out a lot of what we had already concluded. So I kind of, I didn't, I felt it needed more details in it.
Right. And I think that's why, because of the number of recommendations, that's why there was the resolve for there to be a report. So it's, you know, there is, we could include
Just a clause with each one.
But I mean, that would be including this. And so it it is, it, the whole, the whole idea is from the council decision. And there was an associated report that could provide the additional context, definitions, understanding for future councils and the public, even if we were to take a look at. Now, we could add closed, continuous and the like. That's easy. But adding the actual description of the status for each goes into and the reason why I proposed the report because there's a lot of definitions and terminologies that would be useful for someone who's coming in cold to have that we've received through presentations that wouldn't necessarily, unless someone goes back and watched multiple council meetings, have in a streamlined location. So the goal is to really just solidify the council's decision about the recommendation, the status and the descriptions around what was done would be a core rationale for why we have the report.
I I mean, just to elaborate, this lists under a list of recommendations. It says, "The task force was unified in their agreement that emergent and rapidly changing policing technologies are an important issue deserving of additional study and public input." I mean, that is not a recommendation and that when, what conclusion, I mean, that that's listed here as complete, closed or ongoing recommendation. I mean, that isn't even, that's number 30. I don't even think that you could say what the recommendation is out of that or how we could say that.
That was the recommendation. So the items that are listed here are the exact recommendations from the task force report. And what we have been talking about has been a little bit of shorthand, kind of keeping track of the the intent of what they meant by the recommendation in the presentations that we've been discussing. But if our goal, and that was one of the challenges, to say, hey, how do we go back to the original report and identify which recommendation aligns with what verbatim and say whether or not this council has agreed that it is done or not. And then the status and what staff has, what staff has done to address those recommendations would be in the report along with the original language from the report. Council, the city manager, DeSpero.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I think, again, this falls a lot into the slash continuous category, not just completed because it is an ongoing thing and always will be. I think there's always going to be the next better mousetrap and tools that we use. If, just for clarity, is it being suggested that there be a status, a discreet status report on the things that staff has previously briefed on and that they're discreet enough that we could say, yeah, these are in place, we've used them, you know, here's how we're using them or something like the speed cameras where we're phasing it out, just to compile it into a report?
Well, I provided staff with a template for a report. I actually provided a template for a report just to help with understanding what it is I'm looking for.
On this technology.
On 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 this entire thing. So you received a template that included the purpose, dummy purpose, dummy summary of what the task force did for each recommendation, dummy language around bulleting what was done to address, and then the final decision that the council made and when. So the goal is to make sure that the the report that is required to be issued in a year from the date of passage of this resolution will provide the summary and the status of the work that has been done for all 50 recommendations, including those that are closed. And what will happen is over time, those recommendations that are still open, they're not done yet, we're going to keep working on them. That means that next year when that report comes up, those recommendations that are still open, we're going to have an updated status on. And then after that, and after that, and then those will sit on the website. And then that way, any task force or any council member can look at that latest status report and they could say, if a resident comes to them and says, hey, I spent a lot of time on this task force. What have you done? Go to that website, you will see that report and you will see the status of those recommendations.
What level of detail for items that are completed, you know, LPR, red light, speed, stop sign, body warmth cameras, things like that, that we have implemented? What level of detail in that template would you like to see? Because that could
I think it would be helpful to take a look at the template because what you have here, what you have here for those recommendations in terms of the the status for some of these. So for example, for item number 18, for item, well, I created a template to help staff to understand. So for item number 18, the Tacoma Park Police shall use their discretion to end police traffic stops for low level offenses. That's the recommendation that's in the template. The the status is this is an existing policy and it is used as a model by the county. So that, there's a huge gap between the 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 task force making a recommendation in 2021 that says use their discretion to end police traffic stops and then being able to definitively say, this is what we've done. This is the, we created a policy, it was implemented in 2023. Here's a link to the existing policy which which satisfies the intent of the recommendation and is used as a model by the county. Having one sentence is not necessarily enough for someone coming in completely cold to know exactly what we did to address the recommendation. It was relying a lot on the conversations that were happening as during the council. So I could just put these these one liners in here. It's not going to necessarily help people, especially in those cases where the recommendation from the report does not align with the shorthand that's in the status. So that's why this report, this resolution is to just give staff a clear understanding. These are the ones that we believe you've done enough based on what we've heard. Now go write it up. These are the other ones that we believe are in progress and we know that you're going to keep working on it and we will see when you you come to us. And then these are the recommendations that definitely require some sort of council action. We have to pass a resolution. We have to advocate. We have to do some things. So it's really just to try to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what that shortlist of recommendations are that we need to work on.
Right. Yeah, and that does make perfect sense to me. I understand particularly for the blue, the roadmap forward, you know, what are we still tracking? What do we still need to have some work sessions on for the discussion and ultimately council direction? I was just alluding to those that we might even primarily agree are completed or ongoing. That could be a tremendous amount of information. We go back to multiple briefings that departments have done over the, over the last several years. Do we do links to those? Is that acceptable?
No, it is a brief summary of what you've done. Again, the template I provided was like four bullets. It was four bullets.
True summary. I just want to be
Just a true summary with the necessary links.
Okay, that clarifies.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, I think that the, just for the section A, I would like to suggest that right now it says, we consider these things complete, closed or ongoing. And I think for a resident looking at this, if it's a record of where we stood in 2025, we could, we could very simply provide a little bit more of a, of a point in a different direction. It could be that we could use these five terms, implemented, obsolete, not feasible, provided by the county or ongoing. Because as I'm looking through the list, it seems like there may be ones that have flavors of two of those terms, but you could probably pick the primary reason why we're putting it not heavily on the to do list. It's implemented, it's obsolete, it's not feasible. That might be for like offering discounts on on traffic tickets, for example, based on income. It's provided by the county. We had a number of those where the school system was doing something or it's ongoing. And I think that would be very helpful for people who were checking in to try to see where we were at.
Can I just add in response to that? So again, these, we have a couple of items that we have not yet heard from council on a direction that you all want us to take. So once we get the directions from you all on those that require council direction, discussion, those items will be moved to the completed or continuous. There are a couple that staff doesn't recommend, they're not feasible or for whatever reason we don't recommend. But ultimately, the mayor and council has to give us direction on how it wants, how the body wants to move on those.
Right. And those items are in the, on the last, in section B, under the recommendations require council action or decision.
Okay, so for number 30, we can certainly improve the summary as has been mentioned. But does that stay in the completed continuous box or does that go to a in progress? I guess that's the decision that still needs to be made about that one.
I mean, I think that it would be helpful for these items that are, that we're saying are continuous. So is it the case, and it typically is the case whenever there's major policies, I just want to make sure though, because I've seen personally instances where items may be coming forward that require a piece of technology, some aspects of the technology that we have not discussed. So like AI, for example. So is it now our policy that when we have substantial, whether it's substantial modifications in terms of technologies or purchases of that require different types of technologies that don't meet the necessary budgetary thresholds that they will come before us?
So I don't want to, the risk of misspeaking for Chief DeVal. What he shared is that if there are technologies that the police department is considering incorporating, we would bring it to mayor and council to discuss it, sort of like a briefing. And of course, if there is a budgetary component to it that exceeds the the threshold, we would bring it to you all. But as the note says here, we would bring them, we would bring any technologies that we are considering for a briefing before you all. Councilmember DeVal.
Yeah, I I agree that this list attached to the resolution would benefit from just a couple of, whether it's the categories that are written here or the ones that Roger suggested, but you know, completed, ongoing, not feasible. I think that would really help because the report is in the future. This is right now. I think also if we could refer somewhere to the presentation that was given, that that gives people some, some idea of what, of where we are right now, because this is about where we are now. To number 20, no, 30, I think I'm the one that brought it up. And I was thinking not so much what you all have been talking about that emergent and rapidly changing technologies are important and they, and they observe. And as you've been, as the chief has been briefing us, we've been hearing about the different aspects of it. And maybe there's an overview that he could give or not. I was thinking specifically about the data coming from these technologies and AI. And so it was to some extent a new, a different, if you will. It was, if I had to make, put it on a list, I would call it a new recommendation, not, not a continuation of this one or expansion. So I don't know where that evolves. Puts it on on this list, but I just wanted, two things to say about it. The other was when we talked about it, I said I would talk to the National League of Cities folks when I was there, and I did. And what I got back from that, their, their public safety technical expert is that the questions that we have about AI and data are very real and very important and that the, he would be very surprised if, if after we did a briefing on, and he would be an example of an outside expert that would come and explain this to us. But his feeling was that when we hear what's built into what the the city police have bought and how that is controlled and separate from, you know, we all think the data gets merged somewhere out there. And he, he thinks it's a question of our being informed on actually how this stuff works rather than there being a policy issue. So I said I would ask, that's what I got.
Okay, so it sounds
And he offered to come.
So it sounds like for the purpose of this report, folks are of the mindset that it is, it's, it's been addressed if this is a matter of a future work session that is separate from the intent of, because I'm really trying to keep us focused on the recommendation. separate from the intent of, because I'm really trying to keep us focused on the recommendation. And I know that this is hard, but we're going to have to keep doing this for every single task force report that we receive.
So when I made my list of, here's the things I want to put in the resolution, I was thinking that we were adding new things. So I just wanted to tell everybody that because I think I'm the one that started it.
Yep.
May I ask a clarifying question? Councilmember DeVal, are you suggesting to move 30 into, for further council action? Because you think we need to be like, you know, putting it on our future agenda?
No, I'm suggesting that there is a 30A. There's a new expanded version. There's another thing that in the five years, just in the five years that we've been, since this was, report was first imagined, conceived, the task force was first organized, this issue of AI and data has really blasted onto the scene. It's a new thing. And so I am asking, maybe that's what we do. I'm asking for a work session on a new topic related to public safety technology. And I'm further suggesting that we, we ask this one expert to come.
Yep. Can we put a item on a future in September for a presentation on policing data?
That might be a little soon.
We can put it and we can discuss it during an upcoming agenda meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I, I've got to get some feedback from my staff.
Yep, we can talk about it during.
Is there enough there to?
Yep, we can talk about it during.
Can have a more effective discussion.
Yep, we can talk about it.
So what I'll do is I'll write up what I just said and add a little more detail from the conversations and I'll send it around.
Yeah, because completely separate from these recommendations or templates.
Well, it's not separate because if you read what they wrote, they were kind of headed that way.
No, what I'm saying is completely separate from recommendations. You all, of course, can ask for a work session on anything. So it isn't necessarily have to derive from which of these boxes it falls into. That's why I thought just, it's a continuous thing, you know? It falls, in, in staff's opinion, it falls squarely and continuous. There's always going to be this. And from that, you can easily ask for a work session on any specific thing you'd like.
I'm asking for us to add this item to the rolling list for the upcoming agendas for possible September. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, so that was, that was 30. And, and I don't think it would be too hard, given all the work that Asmara has done on the table, to just add a word or two to each of these, which of the three in the category, which category it's in. And I liked that in B, that you had them split, the in-progress versus the council decision. That really was helpful.
Okay. So just for clarifying, and I know we're all trying to move on. So for this purpose, are you all recommending that we move this to progress because you have now given us direction that you want to work, a work session on this item?
No. What, what we're saying is this item will stay in the bucket that it is in.
Okay.
This is a new item that the council would like to have a future work session regarding.
Okay.
It is on the rolling list.
Yep.
For potentially September. We will discuss about timing during the agenda meetings, when we have an opportunity to do a little bit more follow-up in terms of timing for staff.
One more question, a clarification for staff, is that primarily on the technology that we have implemented and an opportunity to discuss an update or status on those? Or things that are emerging? We may not have much information. We might just have some indications that, yeah, this might be coming, that might be coming. But is it, is it, I just want to make sure I can nail down the topic of what you want to address in September.
Yep, we can, given that it's 11:40.
I will write it down.
We can follow up on that, on that later and get a little bit more clarification. But I just want to make sure that for the purpose of this conversation, what we're, the decision is that this item, item 30, will stay in this bucket. That, and that the, it sounds like council feedback is to subdivide section A into the categories of either implemented, we'll kind of work through what the categories should be, but they should be separated.
Madam Mayor, on that, on that front, there are several things in this list that are, that have actually been rejected. And I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that they were rejected. But I'll point to, for example, number 31, eliminate all funding for the current use of purchase of additional LPR technology. The council and the police department rejected that. We went ahead and purchased additional LPR capability. And we also rejected number, or the previous council, I'll say, rejected 35 and 36 and went ahead and funded the construction of the new discharge area, dispatch area and the atrium. So I think, when you described the template, which none of us have seen, but your description sounded like a much more useful thing than this. This list is very confusing, but what you just described was very clear and a lot more clear than the two, the two pair, the two-line document that we were working from. And I thought that would actually be very helpful. And if we had a category that included rejected and were clear about what has happened, I think we would have something that would be very feasible for people to understand what had happened to the recommendations.
Yeah.
So anyway, I think that should be another category of, of, you know, the fate of recommendations that we could include.
But on those, can I just ask, this is the action that the mayor and council took, the previous council. So are you saying that this council may not agree, or members of this council may not agree, therefore needs to revisit it? Or?
No, just, it just is in terms of the thing that happened since the, since the task force took the decision to make these recommendations, what has been the fate of the recommendation? And some of them happened shortly after the task force made the recommendation. Some of them happened in the very recent past and some of them are ongoing. And I actually think that, that it's fine if, you know, if they were long ago, but it's just telling people what happened to them. It doesn't have to have been by this council, I would think, you know, it'd be perfectly okay if they were long ago, as long as people know what happened. At least that's, I think that that's helpful to have the report be historical as well as current. At least that's what I think your intention is.
Yep. And, and again, the, the reason for this resolution is because many of these recommendations, it has been years and different councils and trying to make sure that there's some way. I mean, Councilmember DeVal, and I was like, she said, I thought we, the entire council didn't do this. And I'm like, no, we never wrote anything down. So it is Groundhog's Day every time we have to go back to this report. So the goal of this is to kind of at least make sure that we all are on the same page around the, the high-level status. And the, the details would be something that would be captured as part of the report.
Otherwise, you will never be allowed to retire.
You, I can't keep it all in my brain. I just, I just can't. All right.
What did she want to ask about?
Last item that I had on my list was the establish funding for know your rights, street law training for all students. And I know that this recommendation was geared towards MCPS, but I thought that our conversation was about perhaps having the recreation department looking to offering, offering courses.
And we did look into that. We checked with our rec department. What we have learned is that they don't have the training, nor the capacity to do it, especially now. So what we have, as per our recommendation, what we are, what we plan to do, unless the council has an objection to it, is reach out to the ACLU Maryland. And we would work with parks and parks, I'm sorry, recreation has agreed to serve as a facilitator to get, to organize the, the youth that would be the recipients of this, of this program or of this training.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's awesome. I would say though, that this needs to be moved to the in-progress.
Is it not in progress? I think it is already in progress.
I have it on, no.
Completed.
It's in the completed.
But what was listed in this presentation previously was cities recreation department does not have the staffing capacity, or has, nor have they been trained to administer such education. Police department may not be the most appropriate entity to provide this type of training for various reasons. That, that was staff's opinion. That's, that's a reflection of where we are at this moment. If council ultimately suggests that we, you know, ramp up or, you know, apply additional resource so that one of our departments could, could offer this, of course, we'll work with you. But that's, I just want to remind, that's the immediate assessment of where we are with it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would move that into the council decision.
Wait, I'm sorry, which one?
44.
To council decision or in-progress? Because we decided and they're implementing.
No, I'm just hearing two different things. Rob just said that staff doesn't have the capacity and they're not moving forward. As Mara just said that they are. And, but there may need to be resources that might need to be made available in order to ensure that they have the training. So.
What I am saying is the recreation department does not have the capacity nor the training. So what we, we recommend, and I could move it to progress, I think that makes sense. What, what I'm recommending is that we would reach out to other external resources and work with the rec department. But not for the rec only because the rec has the captive audience in the youth through the summer programs. So that's what we're suggesting. But moving it to progress, as, as Mr. DiSpero shared, we would need you all to provide direction on capacity if you all want the recreation staff to provide it.
But again, if, if you need direction from council on capacity, which would mean that we would need to approve some sort of funding, then it would need to be in the council decision bucket?
I agree. My, my apologies, I meant the council decision.
So, so it, it would need to move to the council decision bucket?
Because the decision is that we need to put money in.
We may need to put money towards it. Okay.
If I may, on the requiring decision. So based on the conversations that this council has had and/or the conversations that previous councils have had and verbal decisions that got made that never got wrote down, I think that several of the require council action or decision are basically already decided. So let me go through them and then you all can disagree if you want. We talked about creating, we, the, the previous councils and we, this council have talked about creating a community assistance office and safety team beyond what we already have with the responsibilities, including essentially social services. And previous councils have decided that that's more than we can, that we don't have the capacity to do that. And I thought I heard that this group agreed. So that would be one. On this, the next one, neighborhood services division, we, we previous council supported the decision to put a neighborhood service, part a neighborhood of services in housing and community development and keep the other part, the parking and speed camera part, in the police department. And so as far as I am concerned, this is already decided. The housing, community development staffing, again, I believe the previous councils have discussed it and this council has discussed it and we have, it's a question of resources and we've decided we don't have them. Last one, the victim witness coordinator position, we, this council talked about it extensively a few meetings ago. And I came away, and this would be a question primarily for Councilmember Schlegel, I came away with the understanding that, that we had, that we were all okay, that it doesn't make sense to have two positions. We don't have the capacity for that. So it does any, so I would propose that these four are done because they've been decided one way or the other.
What were the numbers again?
Two, 2.1, six, and seven.
I'm sorry, two?
2.1, six, and seven. And I'm open to people telling me I'm wrong, but I think, at least from previous councils, that that's where we came out informally, not having written it down. I don't know what the right word for that is.
Okay. Let's, let's do a quick hand, a quick hand vote if we can. And just so that, because I know that we're, we're at time. So just to make sure that folks are on the same page, so the create a community assistance office and community safety team with the responsibilities that include responding to requests for mental health support, emergencies, neighbor relations, addiction, service referral, domestic violence relocation, and referrals for social services and homelessness. Is this an item that council wants to continue to discuss? Or are we at a point now where we can make a decision in saying that based on what staff has already explained in terms of this recommendation, in terms of staffing capacity, that, and the work that they're already doing with coordinating across different nonprofits, that this, this recommendation, we would want to consider air quotes, closed or move to the other, to section A? All those in favor?
Of what?
Of moving it to section A?
Yes, I think we're focusing on the mental health clinicians as our principal contribution in this area and it needs all the attention we have for it in that area.
I, my hands down.
Okay, your hands down. Okay. So, because keep in mind, what, what was being proposed was to create a community assistance office and community safety team with responsibilities that include responding to requests for mental health support, emergencies, neighbor relations, addiction, service referral, domestic violence relocation, when appropriate, referrals for social services, and homelessness. So basically, do we want to have continued conversations about establishing an office that would serve this purpose? Staff has currently said they do not have the capacity to do so. They do some aspects of this, but it's more through coordination with other partners. So I just want to, can folks just show me those hands again of whether or not we want to move this to section A?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I think that this, I understand that we're, we've pretty much decided we don't have the capacity, you know, organizationally to do all these things. But I think the spirit of the recommendation still stands and is of a growing concern. For example, in some, some of the neighborhoods in my ward, we, we just had, very sadly, someone was found dead of an overdose a couple of mornings ago. So I, I'm hesitant to say, to put it in the closed or completed category for that reason, although I, I understand we're looking for a new strategy other than doing it all in-house.
Okay. So it sounds like there is a desire for a council to discuss this item. I, I just wanted to see hands, hands about keeping it as an item that needs to be discussed by the council for a future discussion and decision-making? Or saying, we don't have the capacity, the staff has said, we, I agree, we don't have, and we, and I agree, we don't have the capacity to do so. We wouldn't necessarily want to fund an entire team to do this, so we consider it closed. So if you, are, are folks ready to vote on whether or not they want it to be moved to section A or we should keep it where it is? And I'm pushing the matter because.
I, I don't, I, I offer a, a, a different version of this. This, most of the, of the responsibilities listed here, responding to requests for mental health support and emergency, addiction service referrals, domestic violence relocation, referrals for social services, those are the things that our mental health clinicians are supposed to be doing as the county representatives based in Tacoma Park. Those are the things that the police get called instead. That's what Jill and her colleague are supposed to be doing. So I don't know what name you want to call it by, but that is the functions that they're supposed to be carrying out largely, so.
Right. But the, the intent, and so I think that there's, I think that what you've just described is appropriate. Like it's, I think that we've addressed, addressed this, up you through a different way. But what, and so therefore I'm, I'm okay with us moving it to section A because we've addressed it to the, to the best of our ability without having to create an entire division. But if, if that is something that warrants additional discussion, and keeping in mind it's midnight, but if, if it's something that warrants additional discussion, then that means it would stay in this section of the resolution and we would have to continue the conversation. I would put it on an agenda and we would talk about it.
May I just suggest, because we're, we just have gotten a pilot program going. We just got it going. And we know we're going to have to advocate for the continuation. just got it going, and we know we're going to have to advocate for the continuation of that by the county. Just keeping it here would be nice to be on our to-do list.
I think it belongs in the require and council action category, because I agree it needs additional action by us to keep it alive, but not requires additional council decision to make it hap, I mean, I think that's a different category. That's, right, the one that, where we still have to decide what we want to do is the last group here, whereas deciding how to act, to implement it, is the cluster on page, the cluster that begins as number three, in progress versus requiring a council action or decision, right?
So, yeah, in the resolution, be it further resolved, that the city council acknowledges that there, that there remain recommendations that are currently in progress or require further council action. The council is committed to prioritizing ongoing evaluation and decision-making on the 22 recommendations identified in attachment section B. So that is what we are saying for this entire section. So for those that, where it's ultimately up to the council to either say, staff, we want you to do, we know we have the mental health council's program, but maybe, like neighbor relations, maybe that's something that's a little different and we, we want to tweak things. That would be something that we would need to talk, we would have to talk about it as a council and give staff direction. Again, that's, that's different from, we think that the mental health services, the mental health counselors adequately address this and therefore we don't need to necessarily talk about it again. We can close it out based on the actions we've taken to date on the, for the mental health counselor's work. So, so keeping in mind that it's midnight, what folks can do with this, with this item is definitely focus on the required council action or decision. And, and again, I'm trying to force decisions because I will be remote on Wednesday and so.
Well, I think it might be my, my case tonight.
Yeah, so, so that we can get to the point where we're meeting next week and it's more about voting on, on an item versus having to try to do a lot of deliberation from the dais.
Mayor, would you like to do hand votes on 2.1, 6, and 7?
Yes, that would be helpful.
And we could add one more to that list, Councilmember Dibala, we could add number 16, because we determined that the, that council member, that staff does have access to confidential mental health services already and that we don't need, that that's completed. We determined that in our discussion last week.
I, I think that what the intent for this recommendation was, was different. It wanted, they wanted the, because at the time, there was concern that there may be retaliation, although that may not be the case now, but there was concern that there could potentially be retaliation if folks were very transparent in terms of their mental health needs. And so there was a desire for the council to be more forthright in saying that we, we want this to be provided for all. Keeping in mind that we were funding it, right, but.
We don't have any idea if people make a client, I mean, it's completely confidential, that's the way it's set up so that we don't even, I think that was explained to us last week, access to it is completely confidential, nobody even knows if they access it or anything, so.
Right, but it's, it's not about, it's about the symbolism of the council supporting the employees to make sure that these types of services continue to be available. I, no, I don't want to talk about it necessarily. I think that it can be incorporated into, we have to do the policing resolution, the police, the vision for the police, for the police department, I think it's something that could be incorporated there. So it would be one resolution and wouldn't, wouldn't require two. So let's do 2.1, establish a neighborhood services division that is separate from the Tacoma Park Police Department for functions such as parking violations, speed camera monitoring, red light camera, operations, crossing guards, and code enforcement and assistance. This division would be housed in the proposed community assistance office. That's, this is one where, keeping in mind that the chief has already explained that you need officers to do these items. So are folks okay with us considering this recommendation closed and moving it over to the section A? Trying to get an idea of hands, one, two, three, four, five, okay. So we'll move this one over to section A.
Madam Mayor, can I just go back to number 16? Can we, you guys, is this considered closed? Because you, you recommended incorporating the support for a resolution, incorporating that resolution into another resolution. So the directions that you're giving tonight, are you giving us directions tonight to, to close this out because there is an interest to include, incorporate the support, the symbolic support as part of another resolution, as part of the police resolution?
It could be moved to the in progress.
Okay.
I mean, well, actually, no, because we still have to, the council still has to do it, right? So we still have to incorporate that resolution into the other resolution. I'm not quite sure at this time where that resolution is.
Right, but are you guys deciding that you would be doing that? So therefore, okay, so then it's no longer, a discussion from mayor and council, our direction is no longer needed because you're giving us.
No, we need council action. So it means the council is going to have to make sure that we are incorporating this in spirit into a future resolution that we have to vote on. So it still needs to stay here if we're going to incorporate it.
Okay, so 16 stays here, going back to.
So 2.1 is being moved to section A.
Right, and partly it's completed and partly it's, we decided not to do it.
It's not, yeah. Partly, yeah, or it's not feasible, it's not feasible. For item number six, additional staff to the housing community development department, including a social worker who can respond to housing conditions and safety issues, landlord tenant issues, homelessness crisis situations, and issues such as evictions or nonviolent disputes between neighbors.
And if I may point out, we do have a housing coordinator that does quite a bit of this already. But she's not a social worker.
So this is one, this is one that I actually would like to talk. I, I understand that the director of HCD has said that their staff is adequate, but I also know what the real need is and I only see it increasing. I would like to have this conversation again when we're talking about the future budget.
I second that. So take a hand bow.
So, all those in favor of keeping this item under the council action or decision? Keeping this item where it is? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, okay. The witness coordinator position should be two roles, whereas it makes sense for a victim witness coordinator to be housed within TPPD, a victim's advocate should be housed outside of the department. This is one where I, I do think that the chief has made a pretty compelling rationale for why the position shouldn't be separated, that there are some efficiencies with having the role the way that it is. So all those in favor of, so I would recommend moving this one to section A.
And listing it as rejected.
And listing it as rejected. Okay, all those in favor of moving this item to section A? Can I see hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. We talked about 16, explore the viability of rental housing subsidies and programs to ensure that officers can live in Tacoma Park.
Madam Mayor, I had an exchange with Devin McNally about this today and he indicated that until the position is filled for the deputy, or I'm not sure what it's called, that this issue has been put on the to-be-completed-later list for his department, so I don't think we, that's, anyway, I just wanted to share that because he said that the, the issue of how to deal with the subsidy availability is something that they don't have the staff's capacity to work on right now.
Right, and I think that, I think there's an important, keeping in mind, this report is, is old, but if it's something that we think is important to keep going, we keep it. So maybe they don't have the capacity now, but it's something that we want, we figure out a way to make it happen in the future.
If I may, my recollection is that we never, that we talked about it some, but we never really analyzed it and looked at the details of how much it cost. I'm looking at David because I think it was when you, under your watch, that, you don't remember, yeah, we didn't, oh, okay, I don't think we did it, did it justice, so I'd like to keep it.
Okay, so, all those in favor of, I would like to keep this one too, all those in favor of keeping this item in the required council action or decision section? All right, okay, so we're going to keep it. All right, excellent, thank you all so much for indulging me on this, I know we went long. Last work session.
Before you go on, comments on the actual resolution itself?
Comments on the resol, I.
I, yeah, so what do we do? Send them to you, send them to who?
Can you send them to me and copy as Mara?
I will do that.
Madam Mayor, you had actually flagged one additional one, it was number 50, in your notes to us, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, number 50.
That's under completed or closed, mayor and council should review practices related to the use of civil asset forfeiture?
Yeah, I flagged this one because it, based on the, the email exchange, it seemed like the chief was going to provide us with some, like some information about this, that we don't do this. So I wasn't really sure around whether or not, because it's, the recommendation is asking for us to review practices, if this is something that needs to be part of recommendations for council, for council action or decision, or if this is something that once we get the report, we're just waiting on getting the report that we would ultimately make a decision that is.
He did supply it yesterday in an email to council.
Okay, he, he provided it yesterday?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't had it just.
Yeah, it came late, so you all wouldn't have had much chance to see it.
And then are we going to go through the same process, this, the same tight timeline on this one that we have for the piney branch resolution? So comments have to be to you and Asmara, I'm asking.
Yes.
By tomorrow, end of day.
Yep.
In order to be incorporated in a draft that everybody gets to see.
Yep.
So that we're not arguing about it next Wednesday.
Correct.
In your absence.
Yep.
I'm bringing my boxing gloves.
I don't think anybody heard you, whatever you were.
So, so just to reinforce, I know it's a late night and I know that, you know, you like me, you got to go to work in the morning. But the big thing is making sure that we get those edits, we get those markups. I understand that people are busy, but for the folks that have to work to do the reconciliation of the comments and the folks that have to do the legwork to, to put together a decent markup, it is very difficult for us if we don't have your markups and enough time for us to be able to make the adjustments so that we can turn around and, and share it with folks so that Jessie can post things and she's not posting stuff on the weekends or on Monday. So if everyone can provide their, their comments on both of these items by COB tomorrow, my COB could be really late, but we need those comments tomorrow. And then that way, we can make sure that we are putting in the time to, to give us a decent markup that we can recirculate and enough time for folks that, if you need to have conversations with individuals, you can.
And if you haven't got anybody, like you have Amy on the other one, you need to be on this one.
So, yep, no worries. So, okay, so let's, let's go ahead and move forward to the last item, last work session this evening, and that's the recommended appointments to the council compensation committee. Councilmember Gilbert.
Madam Mayor, could you, would you share your draft template with the?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the committee, council committee on committees met on July 17th, virtually to discuss and review the applications submitted for the council compensation committee. And if you all recall, we pushed, we extended the deadline so that we can get a more, hopefully get a more diverse pool and concentrate our efforts to, you know, to move equitably in the interest of inclusion into those areas where we weren't getting much feedback or participation. So we created some flyers and Jessie created some flyers and we did just that and we were able to get a few more applicants, a total of 12. And so we met for two and a half hours to discuss the applicants. We were really looking for the diversity in this committee. And we're looking for diversity in all of our committees, race, gender, ward diversity. And we were able to accomplish the ward diversity, which we didn't have before we extended the deadline. We were also looking for more tenants versus homeowners and we were able to get that as well. And so we were really, really pleased with the pool of applicants that we had the opportunity to review. And we came up, we, we, we came up with the seven recommended appointees and we had a couple of interesting points of discussion as to whether or not ward diversity was more important than maybe possibly having more tenants on, on the board, on the committee. I'd be interested to know what anyone, anyone else thinks about that. But we were able to, to accomplish complete ward diversity, we were able to find a representative from each ward, which was, was pretty good, so. The recommended appointees are Chiara Atoli, Ward 6, Allison Bellin, I'm sure I got her pronounced, pronounced her name correctly, Bellin, very, okay, good. Nancy, Ward 2, Nancy Klug, Kluge, Ward 5, Peter Kovar, Ward 1, Kimberly Martin, Ward 3, Frank Karofi, Ward 2, Yofta Waterfa, Ward 4. And so if anyone has any other recommendations about how to move forward, I know there was an issue on whether or not one of the applicants, there was a conflict of interest because she was an employee who, who also lives in the city and wanted to be a part of this committee. And there was conversation about that and I sent an email, we can further that conversation. But that was the seven we came up with and if Roger, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Schlegel or Councilmember Honzac has anything to add?
I'll just add, I, I thought we had a number of people on that list who showed they were strong at working in a collaborative group very well and maintaining independence. And we also saw a number of people who had specific skills related to compensation review in organizations that they'd worked for. And it was a question we, we had perhaps for another time about whether some, someone had applied to do this and then at that point was hired by the city, actually. And we, we weren't sure on whether in a case like this, that was a conflict of interest.
Thank you. One, I want to thank the, the working group so much for your continued work on this. I know that we, we don't have a lot of time to kind of talk through the challenge of employees. I, I would say that there are, what immediately comes to mind for me is, you know, potential compensation for committees is being a challenge. You know, if our committees or our task force are charged, like we just spent a lot of time talking about the Public Safety Task Force and the recommendations. And so whether or not you would want a police department employees to be able to populate a task force like that, I would argue that whatever staff, what their roles are, would have to be taken into consideration in terms of what committee they would serve on to make sure there isn't a potential conflict there. We may also want to just have conversations with city management around what is the process that you all are using in terms of identifying staff support for committees? So if you have an employee that is interested in a particular topic. So if you have an employee that is interested in a particular topic, to what extent are they able to, um, serve as the staff liaison or the staff lead for that committee? That might be another way to, um, from their, their position as a employee be able to, um, be engaged with that resident committee without necessarily being on the committee. But given that this is 1216, those are just the things that have immediately come to mind for me. But I do think that it's important for us to, um, have, uh, maybe future conversations when we're talking about, um, committee criteria. I know that there has been some criteria in some other committees where we develop like ex officio folks. So meaning you're on the committee, but you don't really have an ability to, to vote or your, your vote kind of maybe doesn't necessarily count if they have to vote on something. As a way to have people who may have some, have expertise, but may have also like, maybe there's a little potential where there could be a perceived conflict. So I think that that could be, um, something that maybe we want to talk about in the future too.
Mayor, if I may, one quick comment?
Sure. Yes, council member Honzak?
Yes, um, I was just going to say that the, the one thing that came to mind with this particular situation, and I'm not suggesting that we need to resolve it now, but it's just for future consideration, is that, um, the council compensation committee is such a different kind of committee than the other committees that the, um, city populates. And so it, it seemed hard, we, we were, we were hard pressed to try to think of what that conflict of interest could look like in this particular circumstance. But we all agreed that there could be something we couldn't think of. Anyway, just, just for, and we weren't sure it was codified anywhere.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Council member Lammon?
Could we just pose a question to our labor council about whether this issue, whether there's some cut and dried rule about this? If we haven't already done that, just, you know, for, just for this and for future reference? I'm just curious, you know, whether this, this must come up and there must, maybe there is a rule.
I, I believe that, um...
I did have the conversation with, uh, city manager Spirito and, um, he expressed that he had a conversation with Skip. I'm not sure we had a conversation with the labor attorney. But we certainly can do that, reach out and see what he thinks.
Because I think the, the big thing about conflicts is that's, that's covered by a separate section. So if we're talking about financial conflicts of interest, which is kind of different from, um, delineations of roles and responsibilities and, and how that may actually impact somebody's, um, job in terms of, um, some sort of fear of retaliation you're on a committee that could impact something related to a boss that might, you know, that kind of thing.
I mean, I could see where it could be kind of a free speech issue too. I mean, it's your community too, if you want to participate in a, a city committee and it doesn't have anything to do with your daily job, that to say you couldn't could be a free speech issue too. Like, it could work either way. And that's why I'm saying, like they say in the law, things that's, are legal are not necessarily fair and things that are fair are not necessarily legal. So that's why I would like to ask Garrett.
Okay. All right, seeing no more lights? All right, thank you all so much. I know we went long, but we covered a lot tonight. And so I really appreciate everyone's patience. Again, comments and feedback are due, um, tomorrow on the Piney Branch Elementary, uh, resolution as well as the, uh, public safety task force items. All right, thank you all so much, have a good night.